And the public to this meeting of the Dunedin City Council on Monday the 20th of May. Opening prayer today is by Pastor Danny McCarty of the Elam Christian Centre, welcome.
God, I just thank you for your goodness and I thank you for sending your son Jesus to die for us. And Holy Spirit, we just welcome you in this place. I thank you for every person here, God. I thank you for their hearts, Lord God, and for their passion for the city. And God, I just honour them before you today, Father. I ask that you bless every single one of them, Lord God, and every family that they represent, Lord God, and every person that they influence and touch. And I just ask for an open heaven over this place today, Lord God, that your spirit is here with us, that you give us divine strategies, Lord God, and creative ideas, Father. And I thank you that you want to cause the city to prosper, Lord. So I just ask that everything in your heart for the city comes to pass and I just pray you a massive blessing over the city and every person here today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Before we start, could we just reflect on the contribution that Les Cleveland has made to the city? It's the end of an era today and I thought you might have some comments.
So, well, I should give the arrangements that I've made. I felt that given the service and contribution over a considerable period that Les Cleveland had made to this community, that it was worthy, his funeral was worthy of basically postponing a council meeting. And we shall continue to half past one and not beyond, and then those of us who want to go to the funeral can, and we will reconvene should we need to back here after the funeral. Anyone would like to say anything?
Well, just to add to your comments, Your Worship, the contribution that Les has made in operatic circles. Patron of age concern for many years. His work with Rotary in Dunedin, all of this I know will become widely known throughout the community in the next few weeks. But he's also a man who was beloved by many in the city and gave a great deal of his time, his energy, and his finances too, to many organisations and he'll be a huge loss to this city and to the many organisations that he was a part of and assisted throughout his life. If I could, just before I sit down discussing funeral service today with his now widow, Margaret. She was expected to inform the funeral director of some room to be set aside, certainly for the mayor, and we think for other councils as they arrive to check with Lyndon, the man in charge at the service. If not, the service will be relayed into Burns Hall. It's now going to be relayed over there, so if there is an overflow, you would be able to certainly feel part of the service. Thank you.
councillor Hudson.
A civic service to the regional council, to the city. But for me, Les will always be the daffodil man and the road and engine man. And at the time that we were setting Lady Thordell and remembrance of Lady Thorn, Les was just so generous with his time, with his advice, with the plants that we needed. And I think there were many people around the city that have had the same experience with him. He was always a giver and it's not often that that happens.
councillor Wilson.
I'd just like to note, his daffodils reached even our ends of the Dunedin city, but also his contribution to the Itagah Conservation Board from whence he got the enthusiasm to take on the first chair of the Itagah Central Rail Trail Trust and the development that he did on that. That project was considered one that would take 20 years to open and under his chairmanship it was opened within six years, which was an absolutely brilliant accolade to himself and to the rest of the trustees that were involved at that time and to his, the end effect that that has. He has been our patron up until now, and he never lost interest in the rail trail, but it's the effect that it's had on much wider communities in the Dunedin city is just outstanding.
councillor Stevens.
Yeah, Les did, he gave an awful lot, but he gave it with his real passion. He always gave to things where his heart really was deeply involved in. And I see other people in our city also taking that lead and following their passion and giving, whether it's young people giving towards the environment or towards volunteering or other people giving towards helping out their neighbours. I think that we're all giving and I think he leads a great example of how we can all live.
Thank you councillors. We'll move on to the agenda. No apologies, I'll move on to the confirmation of the agenda. I'll move that the agenda as circulated be confirmed. Second to councillor Staines, any discussion on that? Councillor Wilson.
I just wondered if this is a time to actually confirm that the meeting's starting at 12, but it's going to recess at 1.30. It's amended, amended.
Oh, I see. Well, yes, with that understanding of that amendment, yes, I confirm the agenda. All those in favour, please say aye. Against? Number three is for noting the declaration of interest that members are reminded of their needs in that regard. Item four, confirmation minutes of minutes of the meeting of the... I'll move from the chair that the public part of the minutes of the meeting of the Dunedin City Council held on the 8th of April 2013 be confirmed as a correct record. Second to councillor Staines, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Minutes of committee, item five, hearings committee. Now, I'm just not sure, councillor Wetherall, would you like to...
The first case, happy to move. I'll move the minutes of the hearings committee held on the 31st of January 2013 to be noted. It's item five.
Second to your worship.
Second to councillor Noon, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? And B, councillor.
Thank you, sir. I'll move the minutes of the hearings committee held on the 26th of February 2013 to be noted.
Second to councillor Noon, all those, discussion? All those in favour, please say aye. Against? Item six, C to five C, councillor Noon.
I'll move that the minutes of the hearings committee meeting held on the 10th of April 2013 be noted.
Second to councillor Hudson, discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Item six, community development committee, councillor.
Thank you, Worship. I'll move that the Part A items one to five, seven and nine of the minutes of the community's development committee meeting on the 22nd of April 2013 be noted.
Second to councillor Hudson, any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against?
Worship, I'll further move that the following Part B items of the minutes of community development meeting held on the 22nd of April 2013 be approved, and that's item six, Itagah Boat Harbour Recreation Reserve. Proposed cancellation of vesting to resolve encroachment, Part Town Bill.
Second to councillor Hudson, any discussion? Put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against?
Worship, I'll further move that the Part C item of the same meeting be taken in the non-public part of this meeting.
Second to councillor Hudson, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Item seven, Infrastructure Services Committee. I think councillor Vandervis will be moving this. I think councillor Noon was absent for this meeting.
I'd like to move that Part A items one to three. You got me there, sir. I'd like to move that Part A items one to three and eight of the minutes of the Infrastructure Services Committee held on the 23rd of April 2013 be noted.
Second to councillor Ackley, discussion, councillor Stevens.
Can I have five taken separately, please?
Items, which ones do you want?
Just five.
This is in the next part.
Oh, sorry, silly.
This doesn't include five, this one. Move on. No further discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against?
And I'd also like to note Part Two, that the following Part B items of the minutes of the Infrastructure Services Committee held on the 23rd of April be approved. Item four, that's the naming of new roads, Heathfield subdivision, Moskew. Item five, naming of new roads, Glenlock State, Moskew. Item six, funding assistance rates review. And item seven, submission and review of the framework for public health grading of community drinking water supplies.
Now, councillor Stevenson, you want five taken separately, so I should take four, six and two, four, six and seven separately? Any discussion on those? Councillor McTash.
Well, I just wondered, Your Worship, whether or not it would be possible for the finalised submission on that public health grading, whether that could be circulated for the rest of us who haven't been privy to being finalised.
Certainly. No problem with that, I hadn't have thought. Okay.
Do you need a second?
That was seconded by, was that seconded? Councillor Wilson?
Three, I won't do the other one.
Right, that's fine. So this is item four, five and four, six and seven. All those in favour, please say aye. Against? Item five, any discussion? Councillor Stevens.
Yeah, I just want to be able to vote against this. We have a policy when it comes to naming roads that it should reflect the physical nature of the area and things that are associated with the area as opposed to potentially property developers' names and associations. So I look forward to supporting our policy and I actually look really forward to the community board also supporting our policy because I think it is the way we should be doing things. So in this case, I'll vote against.
Can I have that recorded?
We haven't done it yet. Give second. Seconded. Councillor Wilson. Oh, no, you don't want to do this one. There's a second for this, sorry. Councillor Ackley. Right, any further discussion? Councillor Hudson.
Just in relation to paid notification of agenda removal to the Chair, which doesn't form part of the agenda, I actually referred to Hamner, not Hamilton, as is recorded in the minutes. So if that could be corrected.
If that can be amended, you got that, Jenny? Thank you. Councillor McTash.
I just would like to speak briefly to this as well, and the reason for it is not because I want to rehash the decision. I understand that others around the table voted differently on this, but I do think that the road naming policy process was one that was initiated, the development of that policy was initiated before my time on council. It was ticked off while I was on council and I saw real merit in it. However, I think the last, certainly there has not been an instance where this council has adhered to the policy when there has been a question of whether or not a name that has come forward actually fits within that policy. And to that degree, I question the staff resource that is being put into administering that policy. I think this council needs to make some sort of decision as to whether or not it has strong feelings about the way that a road is named. I certainly do hold those feelings, but in the instance that the rest of the council does not hold those feelings, I think it would be worthwhile us revisiting whether or not that policy exists.
Further discussion? All right, I'm going to put it, this is item five. All those in favour, please say aye. Against?
Can I have that recorded, please?
Recorded councillor Stevenson, do you want yours recorded? Councillor McTavish? Item eight, Planning and Environment Committee, councillor Wilson.
I'll move that Part A items one to five and seven of the minutes of the Planning and Environment Committee meeting held on 23rd of April 2013 be noted.
Seconded. Councillor McTavish. Discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against?
I'll further move that the following Part B item of the minutes of the Planning and Environment Committee meeting held on 23rd of April 2013 be approved, and that's the review of the Freedom Camping Policy and Camping Control Bylaw 2011.
Seconded councillor McTash. Any discussion? I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Item nine, Finance Strategy and Development Committee, councillor Brown.
Worship, I moved that the public part of the minutes of the Finance and Strategy Development Committee held on the 24th of April be noted.
Seconded councillor Thompson, discussion? Councillor Stevenson.
Again, it was notifications for items for consideration by the Chair, which is item seven. And I just wanted that update on the procurement policy. As in the economic strategy, it's so important. I understand now that reporters coming to us, however, I'm concerned that I haven't been able to talk to the consultants or have my input directly. And it's very, very important.
So does this have a bearing on the way you're going to vote on this, or I'm not sure what the relevance of your making that statement was?
Speak to items so you couldn't actually change anything.
Sorry?
Speak to the items though you can't change them.
No, I appreciate that, but I'm just not quite sure if there's a need for you to discuss something with someone, I'm not sure how we can help there here. Anyway, don't worry about it. Any further discussion? I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Minutes of the community boards, item 10, Wakawati Coast, councillor Noon.
Thank you, Worship. I'll move that the minutes of the meeting of the Wakawati Coast Community Board held on the 10th of April 2013 be noted.
Seconded councillor Vandervis. Any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Itagah Peninsula, councillor McTavish.
Thank you, Worship. I'll move that the minutes of the meeting of the Itagah Peninsula Community Board held on 11th of April 2013 be noted.
Second to councillor Wilson, discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Item 12, Strath Tyrie, councillor Wilson.
I'll move that the minutes of the meeting of the Strath Tyrie Community Board held on the 11th of April 2013 be noted.
Second to councillor Noon, discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Moskew Tyrie, councillor Brown.
Your Worship, I'll move that the minutes of the Moskew Tyrie Community Board held on the 16th of April be noted.
Second to councillor Wilson, discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Item 14, Chalmers Community Board, councillor Noon.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll move that the minutes of the meeting of the Chalmers Community Board held on the 17th of April 2013 be noted.
Second to councillor Hudson, discussion? Councillor Hudson.
Sixty raised at the community board meeting regarding issues on the shared path between the Boat Harbour and St Leonard's and issues with the lighting. I understand that we still do not have a contract for maintenance of some of the sections of that shared path in place. I walked it last weekend before last and was quite concerned after seeing Mel's comments about the amount of revegetation that was happening with gorse, thistles and broom seedlings. And I'd just ask that staff look into the issues that the community board are raising and make arrangements to resolve the problems quickly as possible, otherwise it'll get away from us.
Noted. Any further discussion? I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Item 15, Saddle Hill, councillor Wetherall.
I'll move the minutes of the Saddle Hill Community Board meeting held on the 18th of April 2013 to be noted.
Second to councillor McTavish, any discussion? Put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Right, we'll move on to the reports. The first one is a report from me regarding the Local Government New Zealand Conference, an annual general meeting which is to be held this year in Hamilton. It's pretty straightforward, I'll open up for any questions, however, if anyone wants any clarity about anything, councillor. Second to councillor Wilson, is there any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Item 17, partnering agreements with OUSA and Itagah Natural History Trust, that's the Oracanui Eco Sanctuary. Any...
Worship. I just needed to clear an interest in the second recommendation and we'll sit out of that discussion.
Any further questions, or would someone like to move recommendations? Councillor McTavish?
Well, I'm happy to move, Your Worship, but I just have a query with regards to the OUSA. Shall I ask it now? So my question is that there is this action plan for the 2013-14 year, which I applaud and I think that the issues raised are ones that are extremely pertinent and worthwhile pursuing. My query really is how it is proposed that those areas of focus will be pushed along in a way that is timely and will see some progress in the 2013-14 year.
Well, I have taken responsibility for organising a meeting in the first instance with the president and any of his committee who wish to attend with a view to looking at each of the work streams and making it a call, a consensual call, on where and how they might best be dealt with. Because clearly some issues, you might argue that the alcohol harm reduction issue, for instance, has already been dealt with in certain contexts and we will probably continue to have discussions in those contexts. There will be other areas where we will perhaps do it a different way or where council has some internal discussions going on, in which case we might invite the OUSA reps to join those as co-opted. So that's the process going forward and it's my intention to do that pretty quickly.
I guess I just wondered whether or not it would be appropriate to have some sort of report that mechanism as part of this, so, you know, each year. Well, I assume, given that these are the areas of focus for 2013-14, there probably would be some sort of review as to what they would be in 14-15, but whether formalising that would be a useful addition.
Yes, and I'm happy, and I think that's a good idea, and I'm happy for you to, if you're moving this in due course, adding a recommendation that a report be sought. At the end of the, probably, I would suggest at the end of the tenure of the current committee and president of OUSA, that would be the right timeline. Councillor Thompson.
Your Worship, I just have a query with regard to the Eco Sanctuary one, and it's, I'm on page 179, point 3.5. And I just wondered whether it is appropriate that there would be an expectation of a discounted use, given that this is an organisation and a facility which is, in my view, doing incredible work and it's doing it on a shoestring and a huge amount of volunteer labour. And I would have thought that paying the full price would have been the least we could do. And I also, I ask the question because I understand that as a retailer, that sometimes you discount things because you're better off through doing so. So I wouldn't wish to have this changed to the negative, to the detriment of the society, but I just wondered whether there was a history that I didn't understand.
So really what you're asking is whether council intended a discounted use or whether it was offered?
Well, even if it was just, even if it was just offered, whether or not it's appropriate for us to accept it.
Happy to have that discussion with them. It was offered and has been offered for some time. We don't have a lot of events out there, but some, they offer a kind of a corporate rate. Basically, the point of signing up to the partnering agreement was to say, let's just explore ways that we can work together more collaboratively and they're keen to have our staff out there more often and to introduce people to the Eco Sanctuary. This was one of the things that they offered to put in the MOU. And it's in a pre-existing, it's a pre-existing arrangement, as in fact all of the Oracanui Eco Sanctuary discussions are. It's really just, the point of the MOU is just formalising it and to say, look, we're making a commitment to work together hand in hand for the benefit of the city. But I'm happy to pass that on.
I can pick it up in discussion.
No, that's fine, happy with that. Right. Councillor McTash.
Well, I've just hastily put together some wording, which I can bring over to you, Jenny. But I would move, one, with the addition at the end that is, sorry, for ease, that the council endorses the draft MOU with your OUSA, attachment one, and that the report on progress against the action plan be reported back at the conclusion of the current president's term or in time for the development of an action plan for the 2014-15 year, whichever is the earlier. And the reason for that is because if the current president seeks another term and is successful in that, then we may not have a change in precedent until later. And I also did note that there's just, I think, a word missing from... I probably won't be able to find it now, but it's just, I think it can probably be covered off as an editorial change, so.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councillor Wilson, discussion? Councillor Stevenson.
Yeah, no, I think these are both very great and I congratulate the mayor for initiating these memorandums of understanding. With the university, the opportunities to do some of the economic development work from a student's perspective and looking at student retention and keeping and encouraging them to stay in the city is massive and I congratulate you for incorporating that. And for the Oracanui Sanctuary, 3.3, land management opportunities in the city. The city's doing a district plan. We have beautiful corridors of bush that connect all the way out there and to acknowledge that and to look at those opportunities really gives me a great heart.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right, we'll just wait till we've got the third recommendation. Councillor Noon, would you like, oh, I'll connect you, would you like these taken separately in due course? Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, that's really, I'm slightly confused as to the process here as to whether we're discussing councillor McTavish's suggestion, which pertains just to the first one. It would be a lot easier from a discussion point of view if we were able to take each of them separately.
I'm happy to take them separately, so at the moment we will restrict ourselves to the OUSA MOU. Councillor Hudson.
A minor one for Ginny to consider. You said against the action plan, would it be better to say to fulfil the action plan?
On progress against the action plan?
Might be better to say to fulfil the action plan. So we're not against it.
It's difficult without completely rereading my entire thing. I think we realise what we mean.
That project is clearly not focused. Or should I say, not clearly focused?
It's not good syntax, Ladas, anyway, so if you do have a preference, go for it.
Right, any further discussion on the first one, on this recommendation, resolution? If not, I'll put it. All those in favour, please say aye. Against? Now, on to the second one. Would someone like you'll move... Move the second one, you're sitting out for this. Second to councillor Wilson, do you wish to speak to this one, councillor McTavish, at this point? Any further discussion? Councillor Thompson.
Well, it's just going back to my question, I'm just not quite sure if we approve this as it stands now, where that leaves Dr Bidrose's further discussions with the organisation and it may be that councillor Noon might wish to make a comment.
councillor Noon.
If it helps, my understanding is that the Itagah Natural History Trust has an MOU with the university and the Itagah Museum and my understanding, they have a similar arrangement by way of offering a discount for the employees of both those organisations.
So in your view, the trust sees it as a beneficial thing to gain revenue rather than a potential loss of revenue? Well, I'm comfortable with that explanation if that's the case.
Right, so it stands as it is. Any further discussion? I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? On to item 18, update regarding cycle pedestrians safely on one-way sections for Stade Howard One. Welcome, Sarah, Ron and Simon. This is item 18, a report is in front of us now. Suggest that we have any questions for clarification before we start and then we'll move on to the recommendations. Questions, councillors? Councillor Noon.
Thank you, Worship. And I'm not sure who the question's for, but in the earlier recommendations from Infrastructure Services, there was the question around a conversation to be had with Caprice and I... with Cadbury's, and I didn't notice anything in the report, and it was to do with getting the large, or the B-trains into the premises. And just wondered whether that conversation has been had and the outcome of that conversation.
Yes, Simon Underwood, yes, that conversation has been had. I understand that Mia Coles and direct conversation with Cadbury's, and I was also, in relation to the health and safety person. My understanding from Cadbury's that they were going to put an end to that activity because they didn't see that compatible as their way of doing business. I have seen that occur since, and I have taken that, reminded Cadbury's of that. My understanding is effectively therefore that issue has just closed.
Thank you. councillor Brown?
On page eighteen-point-five, under the funding, it's estimated that if we go ahead with these changes, that we need to adjust the parking budget by fifty K per annum going basis. Has that been factored in? I see here it says in the final version of the annual plan, so are we looking at an adjustment to the annual plan budget?
It's factored into the annual plan? councillor Thompson?
My question is, relates to page eighteen-twelve, and specifically the changes to S-one and S-two. The, my question is, what cognisance has been taken of the fact that those short-term parks service the fracture clinic, and that people are being delivered and dropped off on crutches and wheelchairs immediately to those parks, and would no longer be able to be so dropped off if those became all-day parks?
What we've done is, we have approached the hospital, and we've spoken to them about the proposals, and they, through the Health and Safety Committee, have supported the proposed changes with the addition of three mobility parks, two in Cumberland Street and another one in Frederick Street.
Just from my understanding, mobility parks require a mobility sticker, is that correct?
Correct.
So that, in the majority of cases, in fact, I would have thought almost all, the people do, I've got personal experience of this at the moment, the people doing the dropping off would not actually be able to use those parks. And I'm just wondering, in terms of the consultation with the hospital, it said Public Health South, I think, and the, is it, has it been discussed with, in particular, the services that are on that grid, that ground floor there, which, as I say, is the fracture clinic, it's the least mobile people being delivered?
No, it hasn't, it's been discussed with the, I think, the Facilities Management Committee, and I think they've discussed it with the Health and Safety Committee, and we've really relied on the feedback from them to incorporate in this report.
councillor Van Der Wiss?
On page eighteen-point-four, it says that of the twenty-three organisations invited to submit on the proposals, twenty-two have provided feedback. Were any of the twenty-three organisations, an organisation representative of car users, e.g. the AA?
No.
Why not?
We have just consulted with the adjacent businesses.
But surely, this whole proposal most affects car users? The, you've consulted twenty-three organisations, and twenty-two have provided feedback. But how can you go ahead and propose such a big change to parking without actually consulting on an organisation of car users?
I suppose what we've consulted on, essentially, safety issues, and my guess would be, and I can't speak for the AA, we're probably in a better position to comment on the relative safety merits than the AA are.
Okay, so would you agree then that it's down to us councillors, basically, to represent the car users in this particular case? Because twenty-three organisations that have been asked to submit haven't included the car users.
Well, that's council's prerogative. What we've done is we've done selective consultation.
Thank you.
Further questions? councillor McTavish?
Thank you, I have a couple of questions. The five sites that have been identified for additional treatment, and I think the reference is to the bollards, for example, as an example. Some of the ones that have been identified, and I'm looking eighteen-point-seven, under to investigate further now, number two, or NZTA-led number two. For example, the area around the Oval. To me, that doesn't lend its, that's not a scenario that perhaps lends itself so well to a bollard treatment. So I just, and without knowing the detail of it, it's difficult for me to understand what exactly is proposed. So I guess I was just wondering whether, when you refer to protection at wave areas, these may or may not be bollards, is that right? There may be other treatment?
Protection at wave areas is bollards at this stage. It's primarily from Leviathan or Queen's Garden South, where those sort of areas are. The parking, I understand that it was in relation to that stretch outside of the old Palms restaurant, and there were sweatpants diagrams prepared to check that people can still get in and out of those parks. There weren't parking changes as a result of it, it was just checking that there were the bollards.
Perhaps I'm thinking of a different, different location. The, on page eighteen-point-eight, there are a raft of other ideas to be considered and investigated. And I just recall that at a previous council, or perhaps Infrastructure Services meeting, there was reference to an online recording form for cyclists who were having, who encountered a difficulty, and I think staff were progressing that. And I just wondered whether or not that had been progressed or finished, as I thought it would add a lot to this process, and would possibly feel like a relevant outcome as part of this process, should it be completed?
Look, that, we have done quite a bit of work on that. We're almost there, it's just a matter of, we're working with our IT people help to tidy up that on the website, and where that actually sits. It's a report. We should get a report within the next few months.
councillor Collins?
Thank you, your worship. I understand the concept of the all-day parks, and that is to reduce, obviously, movement in that block. And I'm assuming, you are assuming, that it'll be used by Cadbury's workers or nurses or whoever connected to the hospital. My question is, they're an all-day park, but if, for instance, parks are vacant, or sitting there vacant, does the general public, who do wish to use those parks to pop into the hospital for whatever reason, are they going to be prevented from doing that? Or will they be able to? Because I'm sure they probably will.
The all-day parks, the all-day is a, essentially, freedom to park there all day. If the park is vacant, there's no reason why someone can't park there for a shorter term.
For an hour?
For an hour, yeah. The rationale is that with all-day parks, they tend to be populated by commute people, and they tend to be part-nited because they are there earlier and are there all day, and there's just less activity with that. But if a park is vacant, there's no reason why someone else can't use it.
councillor Z.
I think this is a question for Mr. Minno. Ron, the, under the attachment four, in the ongoing consultation, there is a fairly critical part of the cycleway that I think needs to be addressed, and the consultation is ongoing. Have you consulted, I'm talking about the university bookshop area, that particular block, have you been consulting with those parties in that area? Or have you not got to them yet? Is there a difficulty there? Because I see that as a very critical part of this upgrade.
I can answer that. Look, we have spoken to all the parties involved, there are some differing views. And I've also spoken to the new landlord there as well, of New Zealand Post Shop, and what we intend to do, and what I've explained to them, we will go and do some more observational surveys to exactly see what's happening. We'll probably do that over three half-hour periods, we'll gather that information, and we'll collate that with their submissions, and then see whether there is possibly some middle ground. And then we will get all parties, and we will have a discussion and see whether we can try and improve things. That's the approach.
Thank you. councillor Thompson?
Just going back to my earlier question and two follow-up questions. The, on page eighteen-point-four, the indication, you, there's a quote, what I take to be a quote, anyway, from Southern DHB and Public Health South, and it's notated as a personal communication. Can I ask what format that means it came as?
That was received as an email, and we then went back to the person who sent it and asked whether we could quote them directly in the report, and they agreed that that would be acceptable.
And if those short-term parks go, does, this is an assumption you'd be better able to advise me, perhaps, but I would have thought there would likely to be an increase in double parking at that point to offload people in wheelchairs and on crutches. Does that increase or decrease the danger in that particular area?
Well, there is that possibility that could occur. We have spoken to the New Zealand Police, and they are monitoring, essentially, the section, the one-way street north, from Hanover Street up to Albany Street, to try and discourage that practice occurring.
Final question. Assuming that that then occurs, where is the nearest place that people in wheelchairs and on crutches could be dropped off in future legally?
That is probably Great King Street North, outside the main entrance.
That's just that small?
Yep, on the other side of the block. On the opposite side of the hospital.
Yes, but that's just that three, that's that three-car bay?
Yep.
Okay, so it's a sprint with the wheelchair to the other side of the hospital and back?
Right, now, councillor Stevenson, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. There's a couple of cases, maybe three or four, that I can see where you've removed bus stops. Bus stops, in my experience, are very seldom used, and then replace them with either pay-and-display or all-day parking. And I'm surprised by that, because I thought there would be less traffic movements by the occasional bus than there would be by pay-and-display or open parking. So why the decision to take away bus stops that are seldom used anyway? And I had a couple of questions.
What we've attempted to do with this whole exercise is we're very conscious about the pressure on parking. So in several cases, what we have simply done is we have swapped parking around, and we have had no loss of parking spaces to better utilise what we've got and achieve the safety outcomes. Those bus stops, we have been through all of those with the regional council, and essentially, they were bus stops that they were unaware that existed. So what we've done is we've taken the opportunity to put some pay-and-display parks in there.
So just for clarification, that is not for the cyclist's safety, that is to regain car parking?
Correct.
Yep. Okay, and it just wasn't very clear in the report. I share the concern about the five-minute parking outside of the hospital, but I'll talk about that later. And it's not very clear in here, the area outside McDonald's, Pizza Hut, Domino's, KFC, and all the traffic that tends to weave in and out of those driveways. You don't cover the fact that we have a lot of commercial activity on the one-ways, and the impact of that commercial driveway activity.
What we have focused on is these parking changes are complementary to what the NZTA is proposing to do with the cycle lanes, widen those, narrow the lanes. And we have focused on those businesses, the high-entry or high-volume cycleways, I mean, sorry, driveways, that are immediately adjacent to the cycle lane, which is currently on the left-hand side of the highway. So any businesses, et cetera, busy driveways on the right-hand side, short-term parking on the right-hand side of the one-way pier, where there was high turnover, we haven't looked at any of those because the cyclists are on the opposite side of the road on the left.
And I was just wondering if it would be worthwhile having some recommendation about that there is going to be longer-term consultation with councillors as well, and the recommendations just simply talk about the short term, there's no suggestion of what will be happening next. Maybe for you, your worship, maybe some, a recommendation may be useful. I'm happy to move something.
Well, that's fine. I have, it was my intention to move these because I have another recommendation, and I'm conscious that councillor Van Der Wiss has forwarded a recommendation which doesn't necessarily conflict with any of the others either. So it may be that you, have you written a recommend, have you written a motion down? Perhaps if you do that and provide it to Jenny, then we can take them in order. councillor Stevens?
Thank you, worship. Simon, this is probably a question for you. I notice on the other ideas to be considered, there's a mention there of cycle-sensitive detector loops. And this is a subject that came up during our annual plan, there was a submission on that, where cyclists are turning up at lights, the lights don't change, so either they ride through on a red or they have to get off, press a pedestrian button to actually get the right across the intersection. And you note in there that they're being fitted where there are new traffic lights being installed. Does that mean that the other lights that are along the one-way can't be converted because they're too old, or can they also go on a list to be converted so that cyclists can get recognised?
The intent now was to focus on new installations. The, the FDR in terms of short-term improvements was all about line and cycle lanes, looking at the parking changes, looking at the protection, the long-term planning. But where we do have a new installation at hand, then we will put signals, sensors in. It doesn't mean that others can't be retrofitted, it's just a matter of time. An example of new installation will be, as part of the ANTA-CAD in-section changes, following comments at the last Infrastructure Services Committee meeting, there will be provision for cyclists using a cycle lane to turn right across into Stewart Street, and that will involve cycle detection.
councillor Wilson?
I just, two questions. One is the bus stops that you talked about, that you can talk with the ORC that they don't use. I'm just wondering who else might use those? Because I would have thought that some of those bus stops were used by buses bringing school groups into town who need to park up after dropping them off, or other tour groups. It's a consultation only with the ORC in those instances.
They could be used possibly by tourist buses, but the main area that we're aware of where there's heavy demand is around Toito and the Chinese Gardens, and we've consulted with both of those parties.
Okay. And I'm just understanding the effect, we've received an email this morning, I think, advising of a workshop possibly happening in June. The effect of the motions as proposed will, has maybe changed? Be that the first ones being the ones that you've already consulted on and got agreement, will happen in the garden sort of, if it might be workshop later, is it? How that might happen, or?
In terms of what's agreed now, what's on the table is the short-term, what we're calling short-term improvements. There's been no long-term improvements agreed. The purpose of the workshop was to give council members a heads-up as to all the options that have been considered, and to rationalise that down as to what should go forward for consultation.
Further question from that then, so if there were to be some dramatic changes, for example, taking and moving the parking out and putting the cycle way- taking and moving the parking out and putting the cycle way down the right side of the footpath, it is more of those long-term ones that you would consider at a later date rather than sooner?
Yes, there are a lot of those longer-term options. These short-term ones were all about what we will be prepared to do now, regardless as to whether it fits into a long-term plan or not.
Thank you.
councillor Akon.
Thank you, worship. My, my question was sort of in that same sort of zone. The, the report states quite clearly that there are currently five routes north and south under consideration for cyclists. And that these will be presented to councillors next month in a workshop. And that NZTA were not prepared to make any wide-scale parking removal due to the fact that what, once a particular decision is made there, this may not be at all required. To me, this seems relatively wide-scale, and I was just wondering why this is being done so, what I would say, quickly, just about knee-jerk. And the, the impact that it is effectively going to have on, on the motorists, on the people using these particular areas, they haven't been spoken to. We don't know their feedback. What, what we do know based on past experience when it comes to making changes to parking, we'll hear about it once we've done it. So I was just wondering why this is being fast-tracked when the report itself says some of these changes may not actually be necessary.
I can answer that. We asked, and I asked specifically on the death, the unfortunate death of the cyclist outside the hospital some time ago, for staff and NZTA to come back with short-term and long-term solutions. And I have to say, I've expressed my frustration at the time it has taken. So rather than this being knee-jerk, which I frankly find extraordinary given the length of time, it is actually probably a timely response to what council and I asked for. You may have further comment?
I might leave it at that, I can.
Any further questions?
I'll refer to your answer then.
Got the answer. councillor Stevenson.
Okay, I do have a concern about that. I'm looking at map eighteen fifteen. Okay, and it finishes at that point, yet a lot of the fast-food places and the proposed new, new commercial zoned areas are actually further up there to the north. And I feel like, you know, it's a very, very important intersection. So I'm going to get towards George Street, Normal School. Got so many people dodging in and out of takeaway places, and it's not included in the map. And I'm not wanting to delay what you're doing now, but could that area, that next block also be considered more specifically? Maybe at a later date?
More, more an observation. How spread it is a long way north, it's only Duke Street beyond that, so.
If you looked at imaginary McDonald's, imaginary KFC, imaginary Domino's, you've actually missed it in the.
Only there, halfway down the page.
That's south of Howe Street. In the block, how, south of Howe Street, and there's seven oh four on one side and seven oh nine on the other side and seven oh one. They are KFC, McDonald's and Video Outlet.
Any further questions? councillor McTavish.
You may disallow this question because I have already had my questions, but I just wanted to clarify on page eighteen five. The reference to the, the strategic cycle network budget from fifteen sixteen onwards, which says, which says here, does not include an NZTA subsidy. Depending on the pitch or how the pitch goes with, to the regional land transport plan, one might assume that invested in the right cycle projects and NZTA subsidy may be forthcoming depending on the outcome of the financial assistance review, financial assistance rate review and that sort of thing. Is that right?
Yes, yes, that's right, Ginty. The reason we don't have a subsidy at the moment is because we haven't actually put the project forward. Once we put it forward, we'll know if we get a subsidy or not, and it'll be the same process that we went through for the South Needing Cycle Network in terms of putting it forward and then not finding out for a while and then, yeah, a decision being made.
councillor Buzek.
I'm really supportive of what you're doing here. But one of the things that does concern me, and it comes back to the question I asked before, and touches on the issue that councillor Thompson raised with regards to consultation. Now, most of the councillors sitting around this table were aware of the difficulties that we had when we tried to change city parking around some years ago. And we felt that we had consulted right across the board. But when the changes were made, we found there were a lot of people coming out of woodwork saying they weren't consulted. Now, I'm really concerned that we, we must touch base, thinking outside of the square, of people, for example, who are going to be inconvenienced in some way. Should we not be consulting them? Because what I found the last time when we tried to make changes like this were people who were disadvantaged in some way were only felt aggrieved because they weren't consulted. Had we consulted, they would have probably gone along with what they saw. So the point I'm making, it is very, very important, in my view, that we spread the net as far as we can with regards to consultation. Are you satisfied we've done that with, with this present process?
Well, maybe we could view this as preliminary consultation. I mean, if the council wishes us to go wider, then we've got the match and the proposals and the rationale all there, and we can take it from there.
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to follow that. I guess it's, and getting back to the point that councillor Thompson made before. You only need one person who, who has difficulty getting from where they were initially and their disadvantages physically or whatever. You only need one or two of them, and then it really does make our consultation look inadequate. That's the point I'm making.
We could, if the council wishes, we could publicly advertise these changes and consult on that basis.
councillor McTavish.
I have one brief question. On eighteen thirteen, I note that in the middle panel that consultation is ongoing. I presume that means you haven't totally decided on this.
Yeah, correct.
Yep. In that, it's a pretty busy corner, as we all know. There's the post office there, there's a hairdresser and university bookshop. And it's a pretty busy little place to get in and out of when I try to get there. But you plan to convert two P5 parks to an authorised vehicle-only park. One or two?
One.
One. So you're taking out two P5s and putting one authorised.
May I just add, this was the initial proposal. And we've had feedback from the businesses since then, and they are not, they don't believe an AVO is required. And there are different views between the parties involved, so what we need to do is go out there, see what's happening, read their submissions again, put it all together, have a meeting, and see whether we can find a middle ground.
That probably clarifies. My question was, what kind of, what do you call it, an AVO, do you?
Authorised vehicle only park.
Who would that be normally?
That's basically for commercial vehicles with a permit. They can pick up and drop off goods.
Right. Now, as I indicated, these questions, as I indicated, I would like to move these recommendations. And I have a third one. And I'll get Jenny to put them up. And I'm conscious that councillor Vandevus has another one, so we'll get them all up and we can take them one at a time. And the only caveat on that is that if any contradict one another, one will have to become the consequential motion. But from what I've seen so far, they don't. I'm going to, as I say, move the first two. And the third one is that the five options brought to council, to the council workshop be ranked in order of safety and efficiency by staff and to NZTA. My reasoning for that is that the changes that are being proposed here should be done on the basis of safety and efficiency. Now, we have had reference here to the consultation on previous parking changes. But I've put out a fundamental difference. Consultation on previous parking changes has been around convenience for shop owners and motorists, et cetera. And among other things, as we know. But this consultation, this decision, these proposals are around safety. And so in my view, they should be, at least the options should be prioritised by expert advice. What I don't want to have happen is to have five options brought to, to this council not prioritised. And then we are expected to make a decision when we're not the experts and we start making a decision on political and business and other pressure grounds, and that would not be acceptable. So I'm suggesting that the five options brought to the council workshop should at least be ranked by the NZTA and staff when they're brought to us, so that we have some kind of expert advice behind the, the decision-making that we have to make. So that's the, that's the third one. Would you, I think for the purposes of, of the debate, we can put councillor Vandevus's motion up as well. And we'll see, and we can debate them through one at a time or not. councillor Stevenson.
I was just wondering with the third one of yours, if the five options for the longer term, just to make it clear in a minute that it is the longer-term strategy.
It's fine. councillor Vandevus.
Just wondering if councillor Staines has seconded your motion?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, he has.
Inspector.
Good luck there. Right, now councillor Vandevus has two notions. That the council further consult with the AO on cycle safety and that the eastern footpath of the one-way going north be considered as a long-term separated cycleway. Can I just ask of you whether that has been part of your thinking in any case?
That is not one of our options at the moment.
Not one of the other options. All right. Can I suggest then that we work through three recommendations that I've put up, that's seconded by councillor Staines, and then we come to yours and, and debate separately, because I think it's going to get confusing. Chief executive has pointed out to me that the workshop will not be in a decision-making mode, it won't be, it won't be making a decision on this. So that it will be Infrastructure Services Committee that the options are brought to. So I would like to amend the motion so that the five motions brought to Infrastructure Services from the workshop be ranked in order on safety and efficiency by staff and NZTA. And that is a proper place for the decision to be made and for advice to be given. Okay. I have spoken to that adequately initially, so I'll look at it up for discussion. councillor Thompson.
I would not want my questions that I asked earlier to be considered as, as being anti what is being suggested here. I, I am fully supportive of trying to take sensible measures with a short-term or long-term to reduce risk. I think my concern is with regard to the issues that I've raised in the questions though, is that we have a, a major metropolitan hospital which currently has, to the best of my knowledge, about, if everybody parks well, which they don't, about space for about five cars to park for short-term drop-off in the, what is that street?
Great King Street.
Great King Street. And then we, and we have the ones on the other entrance to the hospital, which we're now proposing to remove the ones on the other entrance to the hospital. I think that that, it is in the nature of people who are trying to drop incapacitated people off that they are not going to go and find a park quite some distance away and then get them to hop back. They will try to drop them off outside the entrance to fracture clinic. And I think that it's, I'm surprised that the advice from the hospital is that that isn't an issue. And I wonder whether that's been considered by, or whether it's been looked at more from a safety perspective, public health, safety perspective, rather than a practicality for patient perspective. So I would like to be able to support this, but I would like, I, I need to be able to, if I'm going to do that, to do it in such a way that that particular issue can be further canvassed. I know from my part, personal experience of trying to drop somebody off in a wheelchair on a weekly basis there, and also whilst doing, so I drop them, I get them out of the car, get them into the chair, I then go and take my car and find a park. And while I'm doing that, there are people dropping people off all the time. I'm just not sure that this one's been thought through.
Can I move something to that?
We've got a, we've got a motion.
It's an amendment, sir.
Sorry?
An amendment.
You want to move an amendment?
Yes. So my amendment would be, there would be an amendment one, that the changes, we note the parking changes and where affected parties have been supportive, with the exception of outside five-two-five Cumberland Street, which will undergo further consultation. So we simply make that a red box for further consultation.
Is there a second for that amendment? Second to councillor Thompson? So we're now discussing the amendment, which is that with, with the exception of the area of Cumberland Street outside the hospital, which will undergo further consultation. Are there speakers to councillor McTavish?
Look, I, I have sympathy for councillor Thompson's perspective, but I think that the current situation that he describes is precisely why we've undertaken this review, because that is where the fatality occurred. And it was an opening door in that section. I don't know whether they were dropping off someone to the fracture clinic or not, but it was an opening door in that particular section of the road that this occurred. I know myself that I feel like I'm running a gauntlet when I, when I, when I go down there and I, I personally see what has been suggested as only a short-term solution. I think that parking in the current configuration there is, is a, is a nightmare for cyclists or for those who are choosing to use the cycle mode. For that reason, I can't support this amendment. The reason for that is because I think that staff have clearly consulted with the DHB on that issue. The DHB, I think, has sensibly taken the wider safety view of this issue. Staff are providing their best advice back to us in terms of safety outcomes. And I imagine, I think we've heard from them that they have taken that broader view. So I would find it very, I find, I find it impossible to support this particular amendment in the context of the fact that this is where our most recent fatality occurred. And this is precisely the problem area that we, that we, that caused us to set out on this, this journey. So I personally think it's the most dangerous area in the entire one-way section.
councillor Thompson.
I don't doubt that councillor McTavish is right, that it probably is the most dangerous area in the one-way section. My, my concern is that it will be My, my concern is that it will become more dangerous because people will double-park in that area to enable people to get out and go into that particular part of the hospital and that's my concern. If I'm not, I don't wish, how do I say this without ending up in a lot of trouble? I'm, I'm concerned to understand which parts of the hospital have commented on this and how far up the chain it's got. Desperately trying to get an answer, but I won't get one in time. Because I'm, I'm concerned that the perspective may have been predominantly from a safety perspective, not saying that's not the right perspective. And so I just, I think all this amendment does is enable us to have some further consultation. It may be possible that there is some, somewhere else, for example, just around the corner in Frederick Street? I'm not sure. My meting readings is good as councillor Stevenson's. But there may be some other solution that would enable people to get out somewhere close to that entrance. But to suggest that the other entrance to the hospital is the alternative, it, it's not practical. The, the distance that you then have to go, you can't, you can't do what you need to do and get back again and shift the car. It's just too far.
Councillor Steins?
I can't really support this resolution while I have some sympathy with the issues that councillor Thompson is raising. Here we're talking about inconveniencing someone with a broken leg who's in plaster who's going in, let's say, versus a cyclist who dies. So in terms of what do we need to do, I think there is need for considerable consultation with the hospital on how a drop-off pickup point for the hospital can best be achieved. But I don't think it can best be achieved right out in front of the front doors of the hospital on a one-way street where there isn't the space. And it's been pointed out by staff, if you've got high turnover parking, i.e. drop-off pickup, the number of door openings occurring in any one hour is going to be much, much greater. So that increases the risk to cyclists. And even if the driver of the car doesn't swing the door wide open but opens it, most cyclists will think the door's going to open and take a phase of action, that could kill them. So here we're talking about a very serious risk to cyclists, a death risk. And I think we should not slow down making these changes that have been agreed to in principle, but we should put in a lot more effort now to work out what is the alternative that will enable those people who are arriving at hospital who have a mobility problem to get out of the vehicle, be dropped off and the vehicle moved. So that may in fact occur if there was a nice solution before the changes can be made because we've still got a wee bit of time to go, but I don't think we should delay them. So I can't support the resolution.
Councillor No.
Thank you, Your Worship. I support the amendment for a couple of reasons. I think that the further this discussion goes on, it seems, and I know that's not the intent, that we're pitting one road user against another road user. And at the end of the day, what we're trying to get is an outcome that meets the needs, the needs of all the road users within the road reserve. So my view is that I support the amendment simply because some further dialogue or discussion could well get an outcome that benefits all road users. So I strongly urge my colleagues to, to support the amendment and if it does mean a delay, you know, the, the long-term goal, even though we're looking for short-term gains, but ultimately we're trying to meet the needs of all road users.
Councillor Wilson?
This is one of those terrible ones of unintended consequences and I'm thinking not so much of councillor Thompson here with his wife, but a mother on a wet day with a child who's in a wheelchair and cannot be left alone and what do you do? Do you push them through the rain or a considerable distance if you can find a car park anywhere near the hospital? Or do you, do you try and park outside the hospital, get them into where they can be looked after and find a car park efficiently? There are no wins with this one. I do think that the, what we could be doing is in asking if this were to go, if this were lost, asking our staff to monitor, and I plead guilty on this one, the Great King Street car parking area, which is often overfull, people doing longer than five-minute car parks, and that should be seen as a drop-off zone. I do appreciate it doesn't actually fix councillor Thompson's issue because it's right across the whole hospital, I gather, you have to go to take anyone to the point where they have to be looked after. I, I'm going to not support this in the, on the other hand, I can understand all the intent of it, but I think we need, we've got other arrows that we can, or other strings to our bow that we can deal with, the car parking issues and we should, if we don't, if we delay at the moment, we actually won't get those other issues sorted. It's a fraught one and I hope that the worst consequences have been though, a death and we have to be mindful of that. We don't want any more.
Councillor Collins?
I'm sure life would be a lot easier for everyone if councillor Thompson could convince us, other board members to provide a run-in and a run-out like major hotels do on the street which is around the corner at the side entrance to the hospital, which would relieve us of all these concerns on the one-way street system. But I just ask for clarification, Your Worship. The, the recommendation had the remainder to go about the eastern side, in other words, shifting the cycle lane over there, has it disappeared or is it going to come up later? Because they could, well, there was a recommendation there a wee while ago that said, and you asked the gentleman if he had considered moving the cycle lane over to the eastern side. That would, that would clarify where I'm voting with this anyway, which is to support the amendment for the reasons given. And I'm disappointed to hear that that wasn't considered because when it was raised in committee, and I was certainly one that did, it just seems a logical answer to relieving some of the problem, that if a car owner opens the door onto the footpath on the other side of the road, there's no cyclist to worry about. There is a pedestrian maybe, but there is no cyclist. Our problems have stemmed from a fatality when someone, as councillor Steins rightly said, opened the door inadvertently quickly on that side. So that is why you had a fatality, because someone did that. If you moved the cycle lane to the other side of the road, that would not be the case because eight or nine times out of ten, cars are driven by one person. And if there was a passenger, that other passenger, as is the case for the rest of the one-way street system, is very careful indeed about opening the door, stepping out into the flow of traffic. So I'm probably asking in a roundabout way, well, that recommendation that you had, we still get a chance to vote on that after this.
I'm not, I just want to clarify, because you're speaking about councillor Vandervis' motion. I understood that you were talking about the footpath, councillor Vandervis, or were you talking about just moving the cycle way to the?
Moving the cycle way, as a dedicated cycle way to the eastern footpath.
Right. Well, the answer to your question, councillor Collins, is yes, that, that motion will come up when we've dealt with this one because it doesn't conflict with this one necessarily, although it has some relevance, I acknowledge, but nonetheless.
That's how the clarification goes. You're talking about a footpath, I'm talking about the road.
No, we're talking about the road, the eastern side of the road, is that right?
No, we're talking about a long-term separated cycle way on the footpath of the one-way going north. All right. Motion was up there, it would be.
So that's councillor Ackley?
Just speaking to the amendment at this stage, Your Worship, which I take it that's what we're doing. I will be supporting this. I have a lot of sympathy for people trying to get into that particular part of the hospital. I've experienced it many a times myself and I can certainly see where councillor Thompson is going whereby people will be in some way, some ways forced to perhaps double-park or park in such a way that they can do what, or get, achieve what they're setting out to do. The, the one thing that just strikes me though is I'm sure that cycle users know the hotspots better than the rest of us. And just recently, I did in fact ride, ride a bike from the Octagon to the university, which I certainly do not do very often. But even as a non-cyclist, I knew to avoid every part of the one-way street that I possibly could. And I got from the Octagon to the university by going in the main, Great King Street all the way, where the, the one-way street links around, there's only one block of the one-way street to get to the hospital. And in the main, I felt pretty blooming safe. But to take those congested areas that you know are potentially dangerous for a cyclist, why wouldn't you just turn left and cut around the back way?
Councillor Butch?
I'll be supporting the amendment and I guess my question also, if I may, Your Worship, if it's a problem to move the cycle way to the eastern side, as councillor Vandervis is going to be talking about later, why can't we just move the cycle way on that particular hotspot to the passenger side of the car now without too much consultation? What would be the problem in doing that? It works in lots of other cities overseas, particularly in Copenhagen, which I have gone on about infinite and seem to be getting nowhere. Why can we not just do that? Switch it to the passenger side of the car now?
Councillor Bezette?
Yes, I'm going to support the amendment and just ask the question because some councillors seem to be hung up on the belief that if they support this, there is going to be some length of time with regard to the consultation. Can I ask Mr Underwood, how, how soon can that consultation be undertaken? Because in my view, it's something that can be done relatively quickly and wouldn't hold up in the process at all. Am I correct in assuming that?
More the question on my mind is, are we required to report that to council or the Infrastructure Services Committee or can we consult and make a call from that? Because consultation won't take long, it is, is what we do with that, that I'd be concerned with.
On, on that basis, is there some way that we could accommodate the process of putting in place the short-term solutions that are being advocated without it coming back to council? I mean, we're, we're all talking about the same thing, it's just a question of there are some wanting more consultation on this particular aspect? And if it was satisfactory consultation, I don't see why that can't be, you know, the, the change cannot be put into place.
Can I clarify this because I'm, I've been mulling myself how I'm going to vote on this because I can see both sides of it. And most clearly I see that councillor Thompson's perspective is that the unintended consequence of shutting off parking, there could be more danger to everybody, including cyclists. And it seems to me that the issue is alternative places for people with crutches or wheelchairs or whatever to park close by. So I give, you know, as councillor McTavish said, this is the most dangerous part and in the longer term, we do not want short park, term parking here, full stop. That's what's got to happen. It sounds like what we really are trying to figure out is where the people who are bringing in injured people can go instead. So if we could be assured, and I don't know that the answer, I have the answer to this, that that is the part that we are looking at resolving, then it surely wouldn't need to come back to council if a satisfactory solution could be found. Is that?
That, that sounds appropriate. The task on us is to find an alternative path, drop-off theory.
May I just provide some information?
Can you, like this?
I have emailed the, the manager of the hospital, that's not her title, but that's effectively she does, and her response is, "I am unaware but will follow up immediately." So that's my concern, that at what level has this decision been taken? And I just, that's, that's my concern.
All right, let's just work our way through. Now, look, where we're at at the moment, as we're in, speaking to an amendment, it is possible, I've got three more speakers at least to speak, and it is possible that we will not get done even this amendment by half past and I'm not going to run over half past and have us, have us, that's a reminder that it's going to be half past. I'm not going to have us rushing to Mr Cleveland's funeral. So I'm going to continue through and then on the stroke of half past, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Councillor Stevenson, you're next.
Can I just say that my comment is directly relation to the parking issue that you've just described because the hospital does have an underground car park for patients who have mobility issues that can actually go down into the car park and have direct access into the lift. I'm just not sure how much availability there is in that space, but I think that's something we should be concerned.
Councillor Stevenson?
Sorry, Tony whispered in my ear, he said that the motion is too specific to discuss and he wanted some flexibility to find exactly what you said, that pick-up, drop-off, safe pick-up, drop-off space somewhere in the block. So I'm wondering if that, if the second would be happy with it, if it could be altered, say, with the exception of further consultation with the hospital to find safe pick-up, drop-off state space in the block around the hospital.
Councillor Thompson, you're the second and you've just been asked a question.
Because I was asked first, so yes, I'm happy. We're trying to find a solution that may be viable, alternative.
So can councillor Stevenson, I think this may be a way through, so can you repeat the amended amendment?
With the exception of further consultation for pick-up, drop-off space in the area around the Cumberland Street Hospital.
Okay, yep. Are you able to amend that, Jenny, please? Councillor Brown?
I'll be supporting the amendment even in the changed form and, and I'm supporting it from the point of view that from a, from a city, we have a responsibility to provide a safe and healthy community and part of that is providing hospital facilities. And our hospital is very central for the whole of the city and we have to provide the opportunity for the unfortunate that come across accidents to actually be able to be delivered safely. I think this motion is going to open up a dialogue that hopefully will give a good outcome for the community. But if the worst comes to the worst, we really need to say then, if we can't provide a good, safe alternative, is this road a road that we should make available to cars and cyclists? Because what is the greater priority for our community? Is it a safe hospital and access to it or is it the ability to ride on every street and drive on every street and then even something? There is a wider debate, especially around our hospital. And if I go back to our parking changes that we made earlier in the year, the big concern around that was talking to the community about access to the hospital and the actual parking configuration that was implemented then was implemented with consultation with the health authorities and the hospital. So I'll be supporting the recommendation.
Are there any further speakers to the amendment? Councillor Vandervis?
I can't support this amendment, not because I don't have some sympathy with it, but because it's predicated, it's based on a plan that we've got in front of us, which has simply not been properly thought out. Councillor Thompson has suggested that the hospital seems not to have been consulted or at least not properly consulted. It's, it's not gone all the way to the top. By far the most significant group of road users, the motorists, haven't been consulted. If you are going to try and vote on something that has been approved by 23 organisations, most of whom are minority, in fact, all of whom are minority users of the road, and you don't consult the majority user of the road, that is to say the motorists or their organisation, AA or whatever, then you are invariably going to get a, a plan with a lot of unintended consequences. This amendment doesn't address the fundamental problem with the plan and I don't believe that the amendment can because we haven't actually really had a proper debate on the original motions that are in front of us or any possible long-term.
Can I point out to councillor Vandervis that this is only an amendment and when, if whatever happens to this, we will be going back into the substantive. And when, if whatever happens to this, we will be going back into the substantive motion.
I understand that. And I hope that we can put this amendment to bed, I won't be voting for it, and then go back and get to the real issue, which is a plan that hasn't really been thought through. Thank you.
Question?
Question.
I have a question. There was an issue raised, or a query raised, about once the consultation has occurred, whether it needed to be reported back. I'm not clear as to whether or not that is a yes or a no. And if it were, if the answer is yes, whether or not, or to what measure that would be reported?
I'm not really sure that I have the authority to decide in any case. But given that the amendment was changed so that it is simply about pickup space, I would assume, or I assumed, that if that was satisfactory, if that alternative pickup space was satisfactory to the areas of the hospital that Counselor Thompson is referring to, then we shouldn't need to worry about it, because that's the interest group in this specific instance. So it shouldn't need to come back here.
So I take it the hospital defines that? So we would be expecting a different response from the hospital to the one that we've already got?
Well, or more alternatives.
It just strikes me that we're voting on something that will cause potential delay, and we don't know what that delay might be. And I find it difficult to vote on that without that advice.
I am going to adjourn the meeting now, because I think you're right. And there's a lack of clarity around that. And in the interim, we will see if we can get some answers from staff as to how that might be proceeded subsequently. We will lay the matter, the amendment on the table. We reconvene here 20 minutes after the service ends. Welcome back, everyone. Now, we were nearing the end of a discussion about an amendment, and there has been some considerable discussion and endeavouring to find a way forward that can achieve the views of everyone, or achieve the aims of everyone. So I'll come back to the mover of the amendment, Counselor Stevenson. You, what do you want to do about it?
Yeah, Counselor McTavish has very kindly found some alternative wording that would work. So if we could have that put up on the board, and we're quite happy to let ours lapse for that alternate, which may get more buyer.
Right, okay. And just to clarify, the alternative wording, it's not just one of the alternative wording. My original motion, Mr Avery pointed out some flaws in the wording, so that's been amended too. So we have a completely new motion, but it's, it affects, it brings the same effect. Counselor Thompson.
If I could just add to that, one of the things that's not on this diagram, but which might have influenced my view, is that where the two P5s are proposed for Frederick Street, there are an existing three P5s just a bit further along. They don't show on this because they're already there, but that does mean that there would be five round there. And that may be satisfactory. I'm not, I don't wish to make a judgement on that, but it does affect.
So let's look at the, now Jenny, is this the entire?
No, it's just the amendment.
Just the amendment. So we are still in the process of processing the amendment, and then we'll come back to the substantive motion. So I'll read it out, that in the light of the proposed changes to short-stay parking immediately adjacent to the Cumberland Street entrance of the hospital, DCC staff in conjunction with NZTA liaise with the hospital to establish a suitable drop-off zone for users of facilities on the Cumberland Street side of the hospital. That staff be delegated authority to implement the proposed changes as soon as an alternative drop-off zone is established and appropriate publicity measures put in place. So that addresses the concerns. Now, I'm conscious that that is a little different, modestly different from the original. So I will allow a discussion on that from the staff. Counselor Vandervis.
In order to address my concerns, it would need to include consulting with the AA and also with St John's Ambulance.
We can get to that in the substantive motion. This is still just the amendment. So is there any... Counselor McTavish.
I'll just speak to this briefly, seeing as I spoke against the original amendment. The reason why I can support this motion is that it firstly states the outcome that we're achieving, or aiming to achieve, which is the establishment of an alternative drop-off zone. It secondly establishes a process for that, which is the liaison with the hospital. And thirdly identifies that staff do not have to come back to this forum in order to seek, I guess, some kind of tick-off or agreement from council in order for them to get on with implementing the changes that are required. I'm still of the perspective that any short-term drop-off area should not be adjacent to the one-ways, because I think that that severely compromises cycle safety. But I'm confident in staff, I have every confidence that staff are aware of that and will seek alternatives that do not compromise cycle safety in that way. So I'm happy to support this amendment.
Counselor Statt.
Thank you, Worship. With the modifications, I'm also prepared to support this amendment. The key for me is that this is done in a timely manner. And we can't afford to wait too long. We've waited quite a long time now since the accident. And it is a particularly dangerous piece of State Highway One. So every week that goes by is another chance for an accident. So provided this liaison gets off the ground quickly, and a drop-off zone that is of much lesser risk to cyclists is identified, then I'm happy.
Yes, okay. Good speakers. Well, I can support this. I was in some quandary. But to me, the essence of this is that the coincidence of short-term parking and cycle lane and busy traffic was risking everybody, making everybody victims. People who've, unfortunate cyclists who fall under the buses or trucks, and the motorists who inadvertently open their doors because of bad design. So to me, this had to be sorted. It isn't a matter of balancing competing interests. It's a matter of getting the best practice, the best design we can to keep everybody safe. So I can support this too. I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry.
Spain, and I'd like my abstention recorded. And the reason for my abstention is that its short-term does not address consultation from either the AA or St John Ambulance.
Could you get that, Jenny? Okay, now, once you've got that, Jenny, could you put up the original motion, which is still, that's out with the amendments, and then let's see what the whole thing looks like together. Yes, yep. Right, number one is, is the first one on the order paper. Now... So number four on the board now is actually number two on the order paper. So there's been the amendment put in, two and three, that's the amendment. Number four is number two on the order paper as it is now. And number five was my motion that has had the wording changed slightly to be more accurate.
And my motion seemed to have dropped back again.
Sorry?
My motion seemed to have dropped back again.
I'm quite, no, I mentioned you could have it as a consequential motion, and you can.
I put them in first, everything else is running in front.
No, no, procedurally, we had an amendment to mine, which I'd moved. And then you can, and so this is, we're still with the first motion. But you, I will take your consequential motion, as quite procedurally correct. Right, discussion. I'll open, start this from scratch. Counselor McTavish, did you have your hand up?
Well, I would like to speak to it, but I have a query first, and that is on, you use the word efficiency, and efficiency could be interpreted in a number of different ways. One in terms of economic efficiency, one in terms of the efficiency of safety measures, one in terms of the efficiency of the network, one in terms, so I'm just wondering whether or not staff are comfortable that they understand where it is exactly that you're heading with that.
Well, I, my intention of this is to have the criteria for ranking being done on the basis of the work of our staff and NZTA. Not, so I meant transportation efficiency, but I'm happy to take better wording if staff think there's something else that would be more accurate.
I have been thinking about that over the recess, as to what efficiency means, and I thought the best approach for us to take would be to treat that in terms of transport efficiency. Because some of the options, in terms of cycle safety, there'll be similarities amongst them, but there are consequences for overall transport efficiency. A third thing is cycle amenity, as to having many of the routes for cyclists. So there is a balancing act in there, but overall efficiency should be for the whole of the transport system.
So just to clarify, you're comfortable, given my explanation, that that word is appropriate?
Yes, I think it is.
Can I just add that my preference would be for it to be level of service, and for it to be level of service for cyclists, and level of service for vehicles, because the two things will be different. But that reflects the efficiency of the transport network, the level of service that vehicles experience.
Mr Avery.
So, Miss, I'm just concerned about trying to define too much in this forum to that level of detail. I think if we take, we can address it from a range of different efficiency approaches, be very clear about the basis for that, and report back. We'll be transparent around the basis of that. We're just not sure we want to be in a position where we try and define that at that level of detail at this meeting. If you, if we take, it'll be completely transparent the way that we do that, and it'll rely on staff and NZTA to take that full range, rather than trying to define it.
Do you wish to speak to this now, or I can come back to you?
Speak to it now. Thank you for that. And I'm comfortable that if staff interpret it as level of service to cyclists and level of service to the motor vehicles, then we will get a holistic picture. So I'm comfortable with that. Your Worship, in speaking to this motion, I want to reflect on the nature of our current level of service. And I think that it is clear to all of us around this table that the current infrastructure that we are providing on this particular network for cyclists is inadequate. And these motions are the first step of a number of steps that we will be taking to try to address that. I think the status quo out there is that we are putting some of our citizens at risk from injury and death. And generally, those are on two, people on two wheels. And we are putting some of our citizens at risk of long-term psychological damage that comes from being associated with a fatality. And generally, those people are on four wheels. But whatever your mode of transport, what's out there currently is not appropriate, and it is not providing the best level of service that we could provide our community. However, it is only with a degree of enthusiasm that I support these interventions. And the reason for that is because I think both Counselor Brown and Counselor Vandervis, in speaking to the previous amendment, have highlighted that it is indeed not, it is not sustainable, and it is not best practice in the long run to have cyclists and to have motor vehicles sharing the same space separated only by a white line. They are right about that, and I agree with them on that. However, it is also not acceptable for people who choose to ride their bike to be constantly sidelined into approaches or ways of moving through a city which require you to go on what is effectively a Senate tour of the CBD in order to get safely from A to B. The one-ways are important to people on cycle, or people using a mode of transport that looks like cycling, for the same reasons why those one-ways are important to people in motor vehicles. And that is, it is an efficient, fast, easy, reasonably easy way to get from A to B. And I think it's just as important to provide that direct approach for people on cycle, cyclists, or people using a cycle as it is for those using a motor vehicle. What we do know is that there will be room for us to provide both 21st century motor vehicle infrastructure and 21st century cycle infrastructure along those one-ways. That is entirely possible, and I'm looking forward to seeing the five options that staff and NZTA have developed to show us how that might be done. What we do need to be aware of is that in providing that 21st century infrastructure for both of those modes of transport, we may not be able to support the current level of parking, which we do along that system. But I think that what we need to remember, and what we need to reflect on in relation to that, is that the focus here has to be on safety. You know, if we are enabling people to move along this space using multiple different modes of transport, that's a real win, and I think we should celebrate that. And I think we should try to do that in the most safety-conscious way that we possibly can. I think we need to keep focused on that goal. And for that reason, I'm pretty impatient to see these five options that are coming forward. And I'm, once we have those and once we decide on a way forward, I'm going to be pretty impatient to see that implemented, because the status quo is not good enough. And while these short-term interventions will improve the situation, they are also not good enough. And I think we need to be clear about that. If we fail to keep focused on that goal, if we fail to keep focused on keeping, on providing 21st century infrastructure along these one-ways for all modes of transport, then what we're going to be doing, the alternative to that, is providing instead for more deaths, and for more fatalities, and for more psychological trauma, and the opportunity cost of mis-benefits associated with providing that 21st century infrastructure. And frankly, I think the city will be, instead of looking forwards in terms of the infrastructure that it provides on its transportation network, it will be looking backwards, and it will be failing to provide for the people that are increasingly demanding that infrastructure in our city. So I look forward to those five options coming forward. And while I support these motions, I do so with very much an eye on the future.
Counselor Wilson.
I'll be supporting this. I'm slightly opposed to some of the discussion, though, and I just want to talk to that. This report is called 'Update Regarding Cycle Pedestrian Safety on One-Way Sections of State Highway One'. I drove this morning off the Jetty Street overbridge, as I often do, and turning north, wanting to get into the left lane to go to Burlington Street. And I have to say that I do that with a heavy heart often, because as a driver, I'm scared of what may, or the cyclists coming up behind me. I see having an accident as a car driver equally scary, and albeit less likely to have the consequences hitting a cyclist. It is the lady who was affected by that accident, I think it was a substantial effect on her. She was an out-of-town driver, looking and probably not particularly well-reversed in cycleways. And around that site, we have to be very aware that it is a location where a lot of out-of-town people come to, being a hospital. I think it scares me driving, knowing there are cycleways, that people, and being seen as a car driver is scary, but also not being able to have full vision to see where the cyclist's coming, and knowing the net effects of opening your door and everything can have a terrible thing. It's not a comfortable feeling as a driver myself. I think as a driver, I want it to be a much more pleasant experience. And I think it's a two-way benefits here, that it can be win-win for everyone. And it is about car drivers as well as the cycling experience. So I'm not quite sure why people think we need to consult more with the AA or anyone like that. I think that most of the people in these businesses probably do, do drive to work and are looking at it from that perspective anyway. And the ones that, there is some irony that we're dealing with hospitals, that if more people rode their bikes, a lot of people, less need for the hospital in the first place. But anyway, I'll be supporting this motion.
Councillor Noon?
Thank you, Worship. Can I ask a question for a second?
Sure.
The question is probably for Simon, and it relates to recommendation five. And with regards to what councillor Vanderbus raised, or the issue he raised earlier about the possibility of using a footpath, I just wondered whether Simon has had an opportunity, to use the footpath as a cycleway, has had, has had an opportunity to consider that. I just wonder whether he has any comment with regards to the practicalities of that potentially happening in the future, or being an option.
There's two aspects from the earlier discussion. One is having a cycle lane on the right-hand side of the one-way pier. And then the other aspect is to whether that should be on the footpath or not. One of the options that we'll be discussing in the workshop does involve having the cycle lane on the right-hand side of the one-way pier. But that is still on the road. The reason that we have, it is a separated bike facility. The reason that we haven't worked up an option involving cyclists on the footpath is because there are so many intersections along the one-way pier that are traffic signal controlled. And for cyclists using the shed footpath, they would only be limited to the green time that pedestrians have, which is quite a short, a very short time. So we don't think that amenity wise for cyclists, that is actually an attractive option. It may seem, it may seem safe, but we don't think it'll seem popular.
Speaking to the five motions, I think the key thing for me is that councillors are obviously trying to work collaboratively with NZTA, of which that's, that's clearly been a successful process, and involving stakeholders such as spokes as well, which is, which is fantastic that we're, we're working collectively to get the best outcome for our community. And I hear what the two previous speakers, councillor Wilson and councillor McTavish, have said, and I pretty much agree with everything they've said. However, I think it's important to remember that it's easy to get tied up with the emotive aspects of what we're dealing with here. And I accept that we have a responsibility when there are concerns, safety issues raised, whether it is an actual incident, or a close miss, or whatever it may be. But I think it's also important to remember that for all the road users, we're trying to achieve the best possible outcome to ensure we have a safe infrastructure for all to use. And as long as we keep that in mind, and we don't create a, we don't create a knee-jerk reaction which could potentially have a flow-on effect to another user. So heading in the right direction, this is the first step of several steps to improve the infrastructure, clearly. I'm looking forward to the workshop in June where we can consider the wider aspects for what would be the best route for cyclists accessing their way through the city, or from the northern suburbs to the southern suburbs. Because I think in the long term, I tend to agree with what other speakers have said earlier on with regards to the appropriateness of using the state highway for that, for those routes.
Councillor Thompson?
Well, certainly be supporting the motion, and, but I suppose my concern is that this is, it's really important that this is seen as very much a first step and an interim step. The mere fact that we had the debate that we had just previously around the issue, other issues of concern for me, is indicative of the fact that we have not planned over a long period of time to accommodate a range of transport options in our transport network. And now we're having to try and find solutions that can only be Band-Aid fixes without a completely radical restructure. Roads and streets were called roads and streets back in the days when people just walked on them, or rode a horse on them, or drove a horse and buggy on them. They were called roads and streets when most people rode bicycles on them apart from buses and trams. They were called roads and streets when cars first started to appear. And my point is, very simply, that they are transport networks for all modes of transport. But increasingly, over the last 20 or 30 years, we've treated them as a transport network primarily for one mode of transport. We've created defensive measures for pedestrians by ensuring that they don't just have a white line between them and the traffic, or in some cases are made to walk down in between two lanes of traffic. And we wouldn't even think about doing that. And, but we have forgotten that there are other, other modes of transport, and, and we have made it. And in forgetting that, we have made it more and more difficult for those other modes of transport. And so we've self-selected in many respects people out of that mode of transport. So for me, this is a first step. We, we have to go further than this, and I think it sits well with where we envision our, envision our city as wanting to be one of the great small cities if we actually consciously want to go further than this, and to do it as quickly as we possibly can.
Councillor Stevenson?
Yeah, looked at this, to me, this is not a solution. Even with these changes, I won't cycle down the one-way. There's just no way. It's scary. And like Kate mentioned, it's scary being a driver there, because you're always terrified that you're going to accidentally wipe somebody out. It doesn't work, and I think it's very, very serious. I think there has definitely got to be better options, and I look forward to number five, because I want to know what the other options are. But maybe we swap the sides of the cycleway to the other side. That way, if it's on the right-hand side, you're going to be cycling beside two green parks, but at least some of it, okay? So you don't have all that commerce, you don't have all those driveways. It's going to make it at least a little bit better to have it right beside the parks. Sure, transit won't like it, because they'll have to repaint white lines and whatnot, and it will cost money. But it just seems to be a real no-brainer, put it on the other side, at the very least. The other thing that I think we're really getting wrong is our planning. I keep seeing commerce right smack on the one-way system. We say that they have to have car parks out the back, and a lot of them do have car parks out the back, but we give them car parks at the front as well. We have so many people going to buy junk food on the one-way system and stopping right outside. It's causing havoc, and that causes more danger than anything. If they want to have commerce on the one-way system, have car parks out the back, you get no car parks at the front, none at all, and I'm talking yellow lines. So when that consultation happens in the fore, I think that we should be thinking, and I would encourage our staff and for transit New Zealand to think about whether we actually are more hard about taking out those car parks altogether. They have them out the back, why do they need them at the front? They're downright dangerous. We've also got a school in the middle of the one-way, we're stuck with that, they need it. But couldn't they have their drop-up, drop-off zones just at eight, nine in the morning, and just at three o'clock? They don't need them all the time, just during those periods. Think more creatively. But I really think we need to fix the problem properly. I think we need to be strong in our planning, and it is not a commercial precinct between two one-way systems. That is just silly.
Councillor Pantes?
I'm very disappointed that we have in front of us now something that's had a lot of time spent on it, but is, as has been pointed out, simply a short-term measure. Councillor Thompson said that he wanted to ensure that this is a first step. As I read it, our first step was already back in November 2012, when the extraordinary meeting of council noted that council would like to see 'separated cycle facilities', unquote. That was a first step, and a positive first step, and it was a step for a permanent solution. The problem with short-term measures is that they are just that, and they can easily become long-term measures as well. This is the kind of compromise that I think nobody really wants. But we're doing it because it's something that can be done relatively easily, and because something needs to seem to be done. Councillor McTavish said we should focus on safety, and I agree entirely. Let's have a very close statistical look at our focus on safety. The major issue that we have in front of us at the moment is statistically that we've had one death in, let's say, 100,000 door openings. What this in front of us proposes to do is reduce the number of door openings to 95,000. Your chances statistically of having one death in 100,000 door openings are really no different to your chances of having one death in 95,000 door openings. What I'm saying is that it's statistically nonsense to suppose that this is actually going to save anybody's life at all. It's a short-term measure that I believe is simply going to get in the way of the long-term measure that we need, and that is the separated cycle facilities, which were already identified as the need in November 2012. More disappointing than that, Mr. Minema, Mr. Minema has said that we have done selective consultation. Consultation that selects only minority interests and fails to consult with the most, with the most significant road, number of road users, that is to say motorists, is not consultation, it's selective agenda. We need a full and proper consultation. We need the people who use these roads to be properly represented, and not just certain sectors to be consulted with. This includes the hospital, the AA, and I would also like to see the New Zealand ambulance service involved. Because although they have their own facilities for dropping people off, they are certainly very aware that a great many people get dropped off at the hospital in private vehicles, and none of them are on bicycles. So I can't vote for any of these measures because they are short-term. I recognise that they're well-motivated. I recognise that they are an attempt to try and do something about what has been a terrible death situation outside the hospital. But as I've said before, if you reduce the number of door openings from 1,000, from 100,000 in a year to 95,000, it makes really no difference regarding when your next death is going to happen. What we need to do is we need to separate the cycle lane from where it is. We need to take it away completely from the line of cars with regularly opening doors. And to me, all you have to do is look at the map to see that the place to do that is to stick it on the other side of the road on the footpath, so that the cyclists can have their own lane. They may be able to share that with very few pedestrians that use the eastern footpath anyway. It's a very wide footpath, largely unused. To me, this would be a long-term proposition, and it wouldn't fall into the problem of, of all these issues that we have here, which are, by everybody's admission, short-term, and in my opinion, simply going to be ineffective, as well as causing a lot of parking problems, which I don't think are necessary. It's not a choice between parking and cycling. It should be a choice between giving cyclists their own separate cycle lane, and there's an obvious place to do that. So I urge you all to vote against all of these motions, and vote for my consequential ones which don't appear currently.
Councillor Stones?
Thank you, Worship. I'll be supporting these resolutions, and I accept the comments that have been made by my fellow councillors that the initial part is really risk mitigation, it's not the final solution. I have some difficulty, though, with the length of time it's taken to get here, and I have difficulty with the strength that seems to appear for the need for parking in this city. I've been on the Parking Review Committee for my sins, and it seems that most Dunedinites don't want to go somewhere unless they can park outside. Now, I accept that we have a hospital, which is a major destination. It has a lot of people going there, either to visit people who are in the hospital, often elderly, visiting elderly. People with injuries who are going back for checkups and further treatment. They need some safe way to be delivered to the hospital, or to access the hospital. If the hospital was being built today, I'm sure the resource consent would require sufficient parking. We do it for all of our other major destinations. They must have parks. So I see some responsibility in here for the hospital, the Southern District Health Board, be it in conjunction with the city council, to find a solution that enables those people who need to park close to the hospital to park close to the hospital. We do have land in that area, but we haven't been able to reach any sort of agreement with the hospital, as I understand it, to provide a parking facility, or even a connection that, from a parking facility, that would mean that it takes away this risk. So if I look at State Highway 1, I don't see just a change in parking as being the solution. I see a need for a separated cycling path. While putting cyclists on the eastern footpath might sound like a great idea, you've got Cabri World, you've got the museum, you've got a number of other public entry points along that eastern footpath. And we all know that a person stepping out of a doorway onto a footpath with a cyclist going past, maybe they won't be killed, but injury still follows. So what I would like to see is for us to bite the bullet, get rid of car parking on one side of the one-ways. Put in a separated cycle lane on that side, and accept that that is a long-term sensible solution. It will mean some people can't have their convenient park. But is that so bad? We're talking about deaths, and while there's only been one death outside the hospital, there's been a few deaths down, down the one-way system from these types of accidents. So if we don't do anything sensible, we'll just get them again. So I support these as short-term, I look forward to the suggestions that are coming to us, the five suggestions coming to us, and hopefully one of those will be a separated cycling lane.
Councillor Aitken?
Thank you, Worship. Not very often do I just about completely agree with councillor Vanderbus, but in this particular situation, in the main, I do. I'm not quite sure about his motion to follow, but I, the, the one thing that I'll say about this is, I agree with the safety aspects. I do, I do believe we have a huge responsibility in that regard, but I don't believe that this is the fix for it. I think that a short-term fix should be putting a little sign of a bike up on the, up on the lamppost with a line throughout. Just like we have with certain intersections, there's an arrow with a line throughout to say you can't turn left there, because there are other safer routes that cyclists could take, and they know them better than non-cyclists. So I think there's a degree of responsibility in the short term to protect cyclists, and I think that it needs to be done on their, on their, on their side of the, the decision-making. When it comes to long-term, I welcome the options to come to council. See, in this paper, that there are five possible routes for cyclists, north and south. I don't know what they are, I'd like to know what they are. And I don't think that any quick opinion type of decision as to what the answer is here should be the way forward. I think that this is something that has to be considered very, very carefully, obviously with the appropriate advice from the, the transport sector. But I do not support shifting car parking and, basically, I won't use the word inconveniencing, changing the whole way in which motor vehicles are allowed to be used around the city because cyclists want to go on a particular road. I don't think that's the, the way forward. But I do very much welcome the options to come to us in June. And again, a little bit like councillor Vanderbus here, this as a temporary measure isn't really going to make it much safer, if at all. I will not be supporting these recommendations.
Right, I was, sorry, I moved this, so I will conclude now. I think we need to put this in context. Council asked staff and NZTA to come up with two things. Short-term measures and long-term measures, and we specifically asked them for those. So to say that we don't want these because they're short-term measures is saying that we don't want what we asked for in the first place. I think it's also important to get the context. This is not about balancing interests. This is about best practice and safety. We don't balance interests when we say, when NZTA determines the best way to design a motorway, and they put safety rails or whatever. They don't say, oh, well, someone not like that. They say, what is the best way of keeping people safe, and what's the best practice? And that's what we do, and that's what this is about. So consultation in this instance is necessarily going to be limited. Not only because we want not people's opinions or interests to be taken into account, but their safety, but because the people that are doing this are expert. but because the people that are doing this are expert. They are more aware of good practice than we are. And I'd have to say that it is not reasonable to say to cyclists, oh, well, look, this is a hotspot and stay away from it. We don't do that if it's a hotspot for vehicles, we fix it. If there's a problem with somewhere, we put in traffic lights, or we put in a roundabout, or we do something. We don't say, I don't drive down there, we take responsibility for it. And I detect in some instances in commentary in the public arena, the idea that somehow cyclists are second-class road users. As Counselor Thompson has pointed out, we're all road users, we make allowance on the open road for tractors, for horses, for all sorts of unconventional modes, because we've all got the same rights. So, there's no point in saying, well, some users shouldn't use some parts. So, in this instance, the responsibility is on us, the DCC and NZTA, to make the system as safe as possible for all the users and as quickly as possible. That's motorists, cyclists and pedestrians, and I repeat what I said before, that the victims in these cases are not just the unfortunate cyclists, the unfortunate motorists who inadvertently, through a slip of inattention, open their door, merely isn't much a victim, and I'm saddened to see, are actually punished for that very severely. The onus is on us and NZTA to obviate that as much as we can and to make it as safe as we can. I think this is only a first step, but it's a necessary first step in the meantime. Okay, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded please.
Counselor Vandervis, recorded. Do you want yours reported, Counselor Acton? Yes, and Counselor Acton. Well, thank you. Now, Counselor Landbus, you had a consequential motion.
Two of them.
Two. Okay. Well, just as soon as Jenny's got your recorded no down, she'll bring your motion up.
Neither of these motions, I think, fly in the face of anything that's gone before, whether you were for or against it. The first is that council further consult with the AA on safety cycle proposals.
Just before you, well, let's wait and get them up and then see if you've got a second.
All right.
Right, here they are. I'll read them out, that the council further consult with the AA on cycle safety, but the eastern footpath on the one-way going north be considered as a long-term separated cycle way. Is there a seconded for that? Counselor Hudson? Okay. Counselor Vandervis?
I've spoken today with Mr Nick Horn of the AA, and he is very keen to have some input into what has gone on, and I'd very much appreciate it if perhaps Mr Minima could email me with any updates that has happened as a result of today, so that I can send it on to Mr Horn from the AA. So, that's the first thing. The AA have a view, they represent, I believe, the majority of road users, and their opinion is something which should at least be considered, I'm not saying it should be accepted. The second motion, that the eastern footpath of the one-way north be considered as a long-term separated cycle way, Counselor Staines has quite rightly pointed out that there is a problem for someone stepping out of Cadbury World if a cyclist is coming past at 30 kilometres an hour. This is assuming, of course, that the footpath on the eastern side is completely only for cyclists, and there's no white line down the middle of it. Most of the eastern footpath is actually wide enough to accommodate having a white line right down the middle of it. The cycle lane could easily be the bit that's away from the building, so that people stepping straight out of the building would actually step into a footpath, and the cycle lane would be in front of them. To me, this is something which would be a long-term plan, it would create the separated cycle way, which this council called for in November of 2012. We didn't call for a short-term solution in that particular time, certainly there was no mention of getting rid of car parks in the extraordinary meeting of 2012 that kicked this whole thing off. So, I would urge you to vote for both of these, whether you were for or against the last motions, because I believe that they will help add to real long-term safety. I don't believe that the reducing a small percentage of the number of door openings, which is what all this parking business, rearrangement does, will actually have any significant effect whatsoever. So, I urge you to vote for both the further AA consultation and consideration of the footpath being split for cycle and foot users.
Counselor McTavish.
Thank you, Your Worship. I, as is currently worded, I can't support either of these motions. The first motion speaks to the need to consult with the AA on cycle safety. Now, as the Automobile Association, I wouldn't have thought that they would be experts in cycle safety. If the mover of the motion was intending on moving something with reference to the proposed parking changes in the project which is currently in front of the staff present, I can see that there may be a more arguable case that they should be included in that consultation. However, as it's currently worded, it's very broad, it's very generic, and I don't think that there is a case to be made for the AA to be involved in all consultations around cycle safety. In terms of the second motion, I just don't think that it's worth staff's time to look into this. I think, I'm not sure whether or not the mover of the motion is intending on that particular footpath to be the sole, I guess, track for both northbound and southbound cycle traffic, but if that is the case, then that would be required, or you would have to have the footpath split in two for that purpose anyway, and if you were thinking about further splitting it to allow for pedestrians as well, well, I think it certainly would not meet the requirements for cycle with, or cycle lane with which are currently required, let alone any other, I guess, desirable things around best practice. So, I can't support either of these motions as they're currently worded.
Okay. Just to clarify, clearly you've changed the wording.
That is the original.
That's the original, so.
It wasn't for the proposals, not for cycle safety.
Right. Counselor McTavish, the wording is different from as you read.
Cycle safety proposals on the one-way system, is that the intention? Or just generic, cycle safety proposals being currently?
Being discussed at this motion.
So, on the one-way system, right. Okay, further speakers. Counselor Bazey.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You know, I mean, I can support this, as far as the AA are concerned, if one can, sort of metaphorically speaking, I suppose you could say they are the enemy as far as cyclists are concerned, and I'd like to know what they have got to say anyway, so I think it's a good idea to consult the AA. So, I would support that. As far as supporting the cycle way on the eastern side, my question really is to the panel up there, I am of the view that looking long-term, you would be looking at all options, east side, west side, north and south, and every other which way, to get cyclists from one end of the town, one side of the town to the other. Now, am I wrong in saying that? I mean, we've got to look at every option. So, just to pick this option, to me, I'll support it, but I would hope that you'll be looking at all options, every which way that cyclists can travel across the town where they're not in the way of traffic, and they're going to get from A to B as safely as they possibly can. Now, is that too much of an expectation? I know that you will come back and say, hey, there'll be some options that would be unacceptable because of the cost, and there'll be too much of an inconvenience for either cyclists or motorists to be able to navigate each other, but I have every expectation that you will look at all options. So, while you may not have the east side of the footpath in your minds at the moment, I expect if this motion is passed, and you will have a look at it, you might dismiss it out of hand quite quickly because there may be some practical reasons why you can't support it, but there will be others, other footpaths and other ways to get across the city.
This is a very long question, Counselor.
That you will look at them all.
Was this a question or?
No, I was asking a question. I've spoken before.
Right, that's fine. Any further speak, Counselor Wilson?
I do have a question, I know it's late, but I'm just wondering, have spokes been consulted in relation to this proposal?
In answer to both questions, our working group, which includes spokes, not as an organisation, but its representatives, Robert Thompson and Henk Bies, there were a bundle of scenarios, options that were thought about, and we've distilled those to five, which we think are most workable, and that's what we intend to have the workshop on. That also looks at east-west connections too, so it's not just north-south, it is a whole view within the city. After our workshop, we would then expect to go to spokes organisationally, and I have no problems at all about going to the AA organisationally at that point too, because simply to know what is going on and in times they have advocated for other than motorists and drivers.
And on that basis, I imagine being the one-way system would also be looking at the transport companies.
Yes.
Thank you.
Further speakers. Counselor Stevenson and Counselor Collins.
Okay. The first one is to do consultation with the AA. Now, the AA are rather car-focused, and they are not going, there is a conflict, their interest is the opposite of the interest of cyclists, okay? So, I mean, I just have a difficulty with that. We were trying to address the problems for those who do not use cars, not for those that use cars. The other one is looks at the eastern footpath. From the way that is worded, I presume that is both cyclists going both directions will use the single eastern footpath on the northern, going north. That goes, okay, that's a lot of cycle traffic, that has to join up with a lot of pedestrian traffic as well, because it goes past all the junk food shops, goes past the university bookshop, and it goes past the hospital. That's great, that's the busiest places.
I guess the west footpath.
See, I can't read maps, Paul. I failed your confidence for a break. Thank you, I'll just.
Before I come to Counselor Thompson, can I ask a question? With regard to the, you've mentioned that you'd come up with a whole lot of options, and you distilled them down to five. Was using the one-way going north footpath one of the original big-picture options? And have you already considered it?
Yes, use of the footpath, we had considered and discounted, and that's because of the low amenity or appeal that would have for cyclists, because of all the stops, the intersections they would have, they just have so little green time.
Thank you. Counselor Collins.
Thank you. It's only a small point of clarification, taking into consideration the cycle lanes such as Portsmouth Drive and down to Broad Bay or wherever, where cyclists are able to cycle both ways. On a one-way street system, if half the footpath was a dedicated cycle lane, is a cyclist breaking any vehicular law or any law by biking south?
It is a tricky one, because the traffic is controlled by bylaw, but that doesn't apply to pedestrians, so I'm not sure what story would be if calling part of the park a cycle lane as to whether that would then be, require a bylaw change, but that's not the reason that we went away from that option, though.
Further speakers. Now, Counselor Brown.
I wasn't going to speak on this matter, but I'm just a little concerned that the second part of this motion has been considered and discarded, and listening to the reasoning without going into a proper discussion, we haven't really thought about best practice going forward, new technology, et cetera. And so therefore, you know, I'm of a mind to support both of these, because I think we need to think outside the square and think, what technology is around now that can get us over that small hurdle of the competition of the modes at intersections and lights? And there may be a very cost-effective method out there which could be implemented to make that happen, and why would we discount it without going down that pathway and investigating? So, I will support both motions.
And I'll come to Counselor Staines, just to let you know, I'm sensing that there are some of us who might support one and some might support the other, so I'm prepared to take them separately in order to get broader support. Counselor Staines.
Thank you, Your Worship. I can, I suppose, accept both of these resolutions. The first one is just including AA in consultation, whether they are able to contribute in terms of cycle safety, I don't know, they are a motoring representative group, so I don't have a problem with that. And I don't really have a problem with the second resolution, because it's already been investigated by the sound of it and discounted. What gives me some encouragement that we will get the right solution is just in our papers noting that on 18.3, we've been widening cycleways, we've now heading towards trying to get 2.4 metres wide, or 2.4 metres of cycleway, and maybe half or a quarter of the footpath may well make a separated cycle lane and still leave a footpath wide enough that someone won't step off into a cyclist. So, I'm hopeful that the right solution will come, I can vote for these, but I don't think they make much difference.
Counselor Vandervis, would you like to exercise your right of reply?
Good talking to you, thank you.
Sorry, you, okay. All right, I'm going to put it. Now, this is the first one, I said I'd do them separately, this is the first one, that the council further consult with the AA on cycle safety proposals, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. The second one, that the eastern footpath of the one-way going north be considered as a long-term separated cycle way, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Carried. Thank you. Now, we're on to item 19. Clive, Leicester Fund.
Worship. I'm happy to move the recommendations.
Hold that thought. Well, actually, there's a choice.
I know, and in saying that, it would be 3A.
Right, well, hold that thought, and I'll open up the question time and then come back to you. So, Counselors, questions? Questions of Counselor Thompson?
The one thing I'm kind of unclear of is the relationship here between the Leicester Bequest, the council, the friends, and just how they interrelate. I'm not clear as to whether the friends have any kind of a priori right over and above anyone else to have input into how that bequest is spent, and so I'm just a little confused really as to whether or not our consternation is around something that they had a right to have a determining view on, or whether or not it's just kind of been assumed that they do have, that, you know, that they can make this recommendation. So, I'd just like some further explanation as to how they fit together.
If I can through the chair, I'd be happy to do that. The friends have no connection with the Leicester Fund, other than their overall relationship with the management of the Botanic Gardens, which is supporting the management of the garden. In this case, it's entirely accidental or circumstantial. The friends were focusing on trying to get a project for the 150, to celebrate the 150th, and through their work with the management of the Botanic Garden, that's where they had, amongst a whole raft of other options, decided that some kind of interactive, in other words, usable sculpture that added something to public benefit for that particular area of the Botanic Garden would be something that they would be keen to do and try and raise funds for, and that's where the sculpture came from. raise funds for and that's where the sculpture came from. When it was found that the project could cost up to $60,000, it was pretty obvious to everybody, including the Friends, that they simply wouldn't be able to raise that money within a timeframe, but reluctant to let their work go, management, I was certainly consulted at that time and said, okay, in terms of the long term, we know that the Leicester Fund would be meaning to make use of the rest of that Leicester Fund for some years, perhaps in the interest of trying to get some action in the 150th, we can incorporate that thinking about a sculpture into what is proposed long term, which is to extend the Leicester Garden. So it was an attempt to get something done. The link between the Friends and the Leicester Garden is circumstantial.
Further questions, councillors? Councillor Stevenson.
We ask for further information. The area in yellow is going to be re-landscape. We still don't have a plan for what that'll look like because we've got a very Edwardian, Victorian winter garden and a sort of Edwardian, Victorian garden in front of it, including Peter Pan, and I still don't know what it's going to look like, that garden in between. So have we got any idea or will it be all the dense planting and all of those flowerbeds and the Peter Pan statue gone or what?
If I came through the chair, as with most garden projects, once we've worked with, I guess, expert landscape advice, people from a landscape architect who understands the Botanic Garden and those various elements that need to be taken on board, then basically the design, a preferred design comes back for council and it's usually made approval subject to funding. In this case, the funding is in place, so a plan would come back. It would certainly focus on what's already been identified in the longer-term planning of the gardens of this area to be developed for increased public use for a congregation, so it would include more hard surfacing, paving, rather than the more expensive grass and flowerbeds. It would also look to reinforce plantings around the duck pond area for protection, i.e. to stop people accidentally going into the duck pond and that would increasingly be using our native plant species in that area.
So the plans will come back?
Yes, they will have to be commissioned and that is part of asking for this funding to be made available.
Councillor McTish.
It strikes me that there are some similarities between the questions around this particular art project and those around art and public places process and I guess...
Is there still questions on?
Yeah, and I guess so. I guess my question for staff is whether or not there are discussions about, I know that the art and public places work or process is going to be re-scoped and as part of the art and culture strategy and I just wondered whether or not those discussions have progressed to a point where there may be some idea of what best practice might look like or whether or not that is too early to have any idea about that.
If I came through the chair, we're certainly in the last couple of days since bringing this to council at first, spoken with the arts advisor and others, our understanding is that what's being proposed here is the kind of preliminary model that may be looked at for deciding on suitable works in the future, but this is dealing with specifically the Botanic Garden at the moment. In the future, when works of art are looked at as part of development of any part of the Botanic Garden, it would be expected that the selection of those works would fall under the policy of council. In the absence of policy in council, I guess this again is an interim.
Yeah, but I think the point is well taken that as part of the art and culture strategy, we do need to get some understanding of what constitutes good practice when it comes to determining public art and how the selection process works.
So just for clarity, when you say, Mick, that what is in the report reflects the conversations that you've heard in what some of the initial thinking is part of that scoping work, is that 3B?
Yes, if I came through the chair, yes, I confirm that is what 3B is based on. If I could at the moment just point at an error in the recommendations for 3B, on the third line of 3B, it says prepared by Mr Griffiths, it's prepared for Mr Griffiths. The brief was repeated, prepared for him, not by him.
Okay, councillor Bez.
Mick, in 3B, there is no mention of Friends of the Gardens. Is that an oversight or is that a deliberate decision to exclude them at this stage?
If I came through the chair, I guess it reinforces the first question. My answer to the first question that was asked, the Friends wouldn't want to be involved in that, they would express an opinion if they were providing funding for it on any or handling a bequest on behalf of somebody. In this case, their role, their position is to support management of the Botanic Garden and it would be our job as managers of the Botanic Garden to liaise with them and take on board any contribution they want to make. We wouldn't see it as being a formal part of this process.
Councillor Collins.
Purely an academic question, Mr Reese. Just wondering after a day or two of steady rain, does that sculpture drain or does it maintain the water? You might have another duck pond by the way.
If I came through the chair, I think it's been informally named a well-headed sculpture. I would certainly expect it to be fully draining.
Councillor Stevenson.
Sorry, just a follow-up question. Okay, so the plan will come back to us, will it go out to the public for their consultation before we approve it? Will the public see the plan before we do?
If I came through the chair, I mean, all Botanic Garden plans are made available to the public. We don't invite consultation because we've used a, we believe, a sufficient level of expertise and knowledge to come up with those plans. Whilst we're always interested in public feedback about how they use and respond to facilities, there's a number of opportunities that are available, but certainly of matters to do with horticultural, botanical and landscape architectural matters, we would basically not go for consultation in terms of, I guess, we certainly provide that as information, but it would be wrong to create expectations that we would redesign based on submissions to the public.
But it would be fair to say that it would be available to the public for their feedback before it's approved by council? Would that be fair?
If I came through the chair, it's certainly available for public and for making comments, but we wouldn't call for formal feedback, no.
Or comment.
Councillor Ay.
Thank you, Worship. Could you just explain the difference between 3A and 3B in terms of timeline and the impact that the different timelines would have on this 150th celebratory year and of course the International Garden Conference, which is here in October?
Councillor Ay, a little difficult to answer that one with anything other. I can certainly happy to give a certain level of confidence that we will be able to drive the process described under 3B to give us a definite design which can be, I guess, articulated for the public, for council, so that a winning design could be at least on the 30th of June for the birthday, could be identified as being the sculpture work that has been chosen. We would certainly be able to, we would aim for that and hopefully then we can aim to have that installed, depending on what it is, by the time the Congress is here in October. With 3A, obviously with Stuart Griffiths' design, it's there, we would have to go and get it detailed now. It's a concept, very much a concept, which is why this sketch plan was far from devastatingly clear, but it would have to be drawn up and specifications and so I guess we'd be in a position at least three weeks earlier than that to, I guess, launch. So here are the detailed designs and we would therefore be able to complete the work earlier.
Councillor Hudson.
Mick, just to confirm, the council discussions at the moment, and I do have the feeling we're getting into the kitchen a little bit, are around the sculptural aspect of your plans. I don't think there are any restrictions on you and the Botanic Gardens staff proceeding with the garden redevelopment and having that implemented starting in June and hopefully being finished before October.
Councillor Ay, we would certainly have to stage that work, but we'd be wanting to make a significant progress with that project, particularly in terms of providing paving and a clear picture to people at the time of the Congress of what the area would look like, even if it wasn't completely finished. But no, the reason for coming to council is for permission to use the funding in that way.
Councillor Botch.
Mick, can you tell me has Mr Griffiths been paid anything so far for his concept design?
Councillor Ay, no.
He hasn't been paid anything. So he doesn't have an expectation that he has secured the commission?
Now, if I can, Mr Griffiths has done quite a bit of work for council and he has some, worked with the gardens in the past and he understands the situation, the garden is imperfect.
Move something or is it...
No, and councillor Atkinson's indicated he wishes to move. So councillor Atkinson, you're moving as I understand it, recommendations 1, 2 and 3A and is councillor Hudson second? Would you like to speak to it, councillor Atkinson, initially or...
No.
Okay. Speakers, councillor Botch.
I'll be supporting this. This is, if Mr Griffiths is the same chap that did the entrance way to the Botanic Gardens, I believe, is that right? Well, I think that's absolutely brilliant sculpture. The man has obviously got his brain and well engaged with what the garden's all about. He understands the place, he feels the spirit of it. I think he's an excellent choice to do this. I'm sorry, there seems to have been a bit of a kerfuffle over this in the media because as an artist, I'm sure he's feeling really horrible about that and I think we should just go ahead and get on with this job. It looks like a wonderful thing and the money's there and I'm sure Professor Leicester would approve. I think we should just get on with it and engage him, do the job.
Councillor Stevenson.
I'm a little bit concerned, this is probably one of the most high-profile spaces in the city. It's right outside the Winter Gardens and the public are going to really care about what's put there and I care about what goes there. So I'm happy for it as it's moved, but I'm asking the mover and the seconder if they would be happy to add on a little piece because I think it's going to happen anyway. And so that one would be, if it was acceptable to build, the bequest be used for a project to extend the Leicester Garden with the landscape plan to be available for public comment and final approval by council. At the very least, I think the plan needs to come back to us.
Can I caution council, and I did this at the annual plan deliberations, I don't think council is in the business of designing the Botanic Gardens. It would make the cycleway debate look rather short.
I was just, the staff said it's going to occur.
If I could finish, I don't think we normally bring back designs for gardens. I understand to be corrected, but Mr Reese can confirm or not, but I don't think the designs for various parts of the Botanic Gardens are brought to this forum to be approved. Councillor Thompson.
I have some significant regret that the original proposal wasn't for an extension of the Leicester Garden and with some associated architectural components as opposed to a sculpture. I think probably if the word sculpture had never been mentioned, there would not have been an issue. Regrettably, it was and so there has been an issue. I'm going to vote against this only because my preference is for 3B. I feel slightly awkward about that because I think that the artist in question has been asked in good faith to provide something. He has done that, he has clearly demonstrated his professional ability as a sculptor. He's done other work which I personally very much, like councillor Botch, I find the entrance to the gardens absolutely fantastic, but I just think that at some point the city has got to hold faith with the resolutions that it made around an arts and cultures strategy and that I think means that when we're doing these things, we need to open it up and give other people an opportunity. And like my colleague on the left here, the last thing I want to ultimately do is to be asked to approve whatever comes up. I would have approved the molars, I think they're funny, they make me laugh. And let's face it, art that everybody agrees about is actually called interior decor. And so if we all agree on something, we almost certainly shouldn't put it there. So I'm going to vote against it. I won't be too distressed if I lose, but I would prefer 3B because it would open it up, but I think we need to get this right in the future.
Any further discussion? Councillor McTish.
Thank you, I just, I'm in a similar camp to councillor Thompson. I think that the initial concerns that I expressed with the report that came forward were firstly that it wasn't particularly clear and this report does clarify that considerably and I'm very supportive of the extension of the Leicester Garden. I think that that will be, that will enhance the area significantly given that it's one coherent block. But my overriding concern when we last considered this was around process and around giving local artists an opportunity to submit and to be part of the public procurement process and that remains a concern to me. We've got one local artist who's offered, I guess, something that we could jump on board and take forward and like councillor Thompson, I think it is unfortunate the manner in which that has been done because I'm slightly uncomfortable about the expectations or not that the artist may have. However, I continue to believe that the way in which we need to be moving forward with art is around a more public, tender process and involving the community in a more in-depth way. I certainly have no wish to be on any one of those committees like councillor Thompson, but I do think that we need to be improving the process and so my vote today is not against a sculpture, I think the sculpture's fine. It's not against a garden, I think the garden's fine. I'm supportive of both of those things, but it's for an alternative process, so that's how I'll be voting today.
Further discussion? Before I come back to councillor Atkinson, I won't be supporting this motion pretty much for the same reasons as a couple of other councillors. I would like, I guess where I'm coming from is I think that the sculpture that has been suggested is fine too, but we want the best that we can get and we're only going to get the best if we look at what the choices are. And if Mr Griffiths' sculpture is the best, then it will be chosen. So we will get that result if it is the best that's available to us. So I would prefer to, it's only going to make a couple of weeks difference, I would prefer to go with option B, having, acknowledging that there is nothing wrong with the proposal that is in front of us at the moment. Councillor Atkinson, would you like your right of reply?
Your Worship, I don't believe that this belongs in an art and public places environment or in the art and heritage strategy, at least not until that work has been done. This is a project specifically for the 150th of the gardens, which was instigated by the Friends and I'll just go on to say that the Friends of the Gardens do a heckuva lot more than what we all know and there has been a period of time relatively recently that support, or shall I say, lack of it for the Friends from council has been somewhat very, very poor. I honestly think that by going in the direction of 3B is taking away the support from the Friends, or the support of the Friends. They have commissioned this from a professional, a professional in the area that works in... this from a professional, a professional in the area that works in, in, um, uh, in, in, in the sort of thing that, that the Friends are trying to achieve here. I don't think we should be wasting time, um, no one has really spoken badly about the particular work that's being proposed, only about a process, but I really don't think in this instance that this process has to be put through some sort of mincer, because if we get a whole lot, whole lot of, um, if we were to go out to some sort of tender process and get a whole lot of options, who's going to choose?
It's mentioned, it's mentioned in the, um...
Yeah, well, staff.
Resolution, no, art sector representatives.
Yeah, exactly. So, the, obviously the reason that the, um, the artist in question here was approached was because of his, um, his, his expertise, his skill, and I honestly think that, given the lack of support that we have shown the Friends of the Gardens over a number of years, uh, and this particularly important year to the garden, as we should be getting on with it and, and backing what has already been done, and by all means in the future, if this is to fall into the arts and heritage strategy, then, well, it's a culture strategy, whichever one it is, uh, then, then that's fine, but at the moment, I think because the funding is specifically for the gardens, it's not coming out of any annual plan spend or from any other domain, that we should be using this now and doing it the way that it has started.
Thank you, I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Put on a show of hands, please.
Division, please.
Give a division.
Councillor Acton?
Aye.
Councillor Bez?
No.
Councillor Brown?
Aye.
Councillor Butcher?
Aye.
Councillor Collins?
Aye.
Councillor Hudson?
Aye.
Councillor McTish?
No.
Councillor New?
Aye.
Councillor Staines?
No.
Sorry?
No.
Councillor Stevenson?
Stain. And thank you for your reasons.
Councillor Thompson?
No.
Councillor Angus? Councillor Wilson?
Councillor Lawson?
No.
Meekell?
No. Um, well, it's lost, um, and, uh, I think I need to move though the alternative because in the absence of any motion, nothing will happen, so I'm going to move... I'm not texting a little guidance here, uh, from, um, Sandy and the chief executive, um, given that there are only two alternatives, if one loses, is the other one automatically there or... No, right, so I'll move from the chair, 3B.
Well, just a, a question though.
Sorry?
What about 1 and 2?
Well, I'm, I'm, sorry, you're right, I'll move 1, 2 and 3B.
But your custom voter has already voted those down. You've already voted the rest, no alternative.
Yes, and I'm moving, we, we can't go ahead.
Can you remove the same thing again?
Well, I am. Well, it would be a pre- a nonsense if we couldn't approve any of the funds, is that what you'd prefer?
No.
Nothing's going to happen at all, so in, in the interests of having something happen, I'm moving the alternative to what was voted down, 1, 2 and 3B.
Yeah, synchronicity is suddenly so important. In terms of process, you probably should take the resolutions separately, and so you take 1 and 2, and then because you have alternatives for 3, but that would be rather...
All right, well, we can go, we can go back on that, to that?
I'm, I'm sure that you can.
Well, with, let's take it, uh, let's take 1, it'll take the ones completely separately. So this is recommendation 1, that we approve the remaining funds of approximately £190,000 on the list of bequests to be used for the project to extend the Lister Garden. Councillor Brown?
I'll give some advice, I think, and I'd ask Sandy to confirm for me, but I think you're caught in a bind here because you've actually voted down 1, 2 and 3A, and I think the way out of that understanding orders is to ask, and you know, I think you'd need two-thirds majority for 1 and 2 to be recommitted.
Ah, sure.
I'm pretty sure that's the process that we should...
On the absence of the late Richard Walls, I'll take your word for it. Okay, um, so I, it's from the chair you mean, that I ask if that 1 and 2 can be recommitted? All right, um, I have to put that, and it needs a two-thirds majority if councillor Brown is correct, uh, to have 1 and 2 in effect reactivated, so I'm going to move that 1 and 2 be recommitted, second to councillor Staines, or councillor Brown, whatever. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried, okay, so just, I take it that that leaves the way clear for me to move 1, 2 and 3B?
I think that should move them separately.
Okay, I'll move 1, all those in favour of 1, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Stain, and give my reasons that there's no landscape plan for the public or council.
All right, I'm, I'm going to move 2, uh, that sculpture, we're to, um, oh, you see what 2 is, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried, and I'm going to move 3B, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, against?
No.
Well, I think we'd better have another division, I assume, I assume it'll fall the same way, but we better check.
Councillor Acton?
No.
Councillor Bez?
Aye.
Councillor Brown?
Aye.
Councillor Butcher?
No.
Councillor Collins?
No.
Councillor Hudson?
No.
Councillor McTish?
Aye.
Councillor New?
No.
Councillor Staines?
Aye.
Councillor Stevenson? Sorry?
Aye.
Councillor Thompson?
Aye.
Councillor Lawson?
Aye.
Meekell?
Aye.
Thank you, right, um, with that, that is the end of the public part of the meeting, so I'll move from the chair, that the public be excluded from the following parts of the proceedings as on the order paper, second to councillor Staines, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?